We're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Again, another virtual meeting, so please bear with us as we try to make our way through the agenda. I don't think it's going to be near as engaging as the last one. Hopefully, we'll be able to handle this with relative ease. So with that being said, I'll move to adoption of agenda.
Motion to adopt.
You got motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. You got who in all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, so we're going to move to our invocation by Councilman Rick Russo.
Please bow your heads. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve our people in the town. Help us to act with character and conviction, with the understanding and goodwill. Help us speak with charity and restraint. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders that people need. With all that's happening in this world, please help us to understand why and when we can resume our daily needs. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
And for those of you who can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we are going to actually move past the special presentations, reading of the proclamation just for the sake of how this meeting is currently arranged. And we're going to move right to the manager's recommended budget.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question before we go any further? Do we have every council member on this, on this team or this Zoom meeting?
Yes, everybody is here.
Okay, because you only get to see certain ones at certain times.
Sure, and we could do a quick check. I know John's, the name is on. John, if you want to say aye.
Yeah, I'm here. The video's not working, but I got the audio.
Okay, I know Ian's two on here twice, so his face is there. And Rick, I just did the invocation. I believe we're covered. Rich?
Okay, good.
Yeah, can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yep, we're good. And Dom is up in, well, my corner. It's like Hollywood Squares. Alright, we'll move to the manager's recommended budget.
Alright, there we go. I think we got that audio cleared up there. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Mayor and council appreciate the opportunity to prepare the FY 2021 budget for everyone. This was obviously a very lengthy process that involved both staff and council partnering together to come up with this. So this is a very high-level overview of the budget itself. The intent tonight is to really present it to the council and the public for the very first time for public consumption and review. The intent is to come back during our June Town Council meeting, hold a public hearing, receive feedback and answer questions from the public at that time. Also give an opportunity today as well upon conclusion of the presentation to take any public feedback, comments or questions as well. So we're going to give everyone multiple opportunities to review this. So with that being said, we will jump right in. And it's a difficult part to start off a council meeting with a 30, 45-minute presentation on the budget, but bear with me as we go through this and hopefully it will make sense and we won't have any technical issues. But a review or an overview of the manager's recommended budget again, this began back in January where the town staff began to meet with the council members across seven different workshops that we just wrapped up in late April. So here we are tonight to present the results of that workshop, of those workshops. We work with department managers and staff throughout that process to define what their operational and capital needs were for their department for the upcoming year. Staff also worked to project the revenues and expenditures for all the funds of the towns, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a moment. But the manager's recommended budget is intended to reflect the direction and the input from council to meet the needs of the community for the upcoming year. We go a little bit further here lately as well with the adoption of our 10-year capital improvement plan and financial model that we'll also discuss in a little bit. But we really are outlining the priorities for ourselves in the upcoming year. The budget is presented again in advance to the council and the public so that you guys can review it and provide any feedback or questions. So some statutory requirements that we have in preparing the budget. North Carolina general statutes, chapter 159, really goes, it goes at length of giving us direction and detail for how we prepare those budgets. The budgets, unlike state and federal budgets, must be balanced. So the revenues that we take in must equal expenses going out. And our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. So if you hear me use the term FY 20 or FY 21, that's referencing our fiscal year that we are operating in. Currently, we are in FY 20, and we are proposing and presenting the budget for FY 21. So as the budget officer for the town, I am responsible for the preparation, presentation and oversight of that budget to ensure that it meets the intent of the town council and their priorities moving forward. So government funding is very unique and challenging. It's not as simple and easy as the for-profit or private sector accounting processes and practices. For us here in the town, we have three different types of funds. These are actually, can be made up of, you know, a dozen or more individual funds for us here in the town. But generally, we have the general fund. That's what most people think of when it comes to taxes and what taxes are used to fund. And so most of those things include public safety, streets, environmental services, parks and recreation, planning and zoning engineering and general administration. And those are funded by property taxes and sales taxes mostly. Those are the two largest funding sources for the general fund. On the enterprise fund, those are more business enterprise-type operations, and they are financed through the charges to the customers who use those services. So for example, our water and sewer fund and our stormwater fund respectively generate charges from customers to help us support the operations of those. In general, we do not use tax revenues for those operations or expenses of the enterprise fund. So delineate between general fund and enterprise fund, they can't be co-mingled in terms of the revenues and expenditures on each of those. And then beyond that, we have restricted funds where monies are collected and distributed only for certain projects or programs. So some examples of restricted funds that we have here in the town are the Powell Bill Fund. The Powell Bill is generated by revenues collected at the state level from the gas tax, and that money is provided to us, and we are only allowed to use those funds for road and transportation type improvements. So it's just an example of a restricted fund that we have that we have to account for individually and separate from the other funds. In terms of how our budget is created and some of the priorities and objectives that we use when we're establishing the budget is obviously we need to meet the current and future needs of the town. So understanding what those are both today and into the future is extremely important for us. Three years ago, back in 2019, the town adopted its first 10-year capital improvement plan and 10-year financial model. And those resources have been a guide for us as we develop our budget and understand where we're going into the future and what our needs are and our financial ability to meet those needs. Another thing that we also want to pay attention to is maintaining a healthy reserve fund. Consider that like our savings account for the town. And we want to look at that in all of our funds, general fund, enterprise funds, including water and sewer and stormwater funds. We want to make sure that we have reserve funds in place in the event of an emergency and that we are well-protected financially to meet our debt needs as we move out into the future. Another challenge for us, we look at each year is to find the most efficient methods for operating our departments. So throughout each department of the town, we're trying to find cost-saving measures to continue to provide high-quality, high-level services to our residents, but doing that in the most efficient way possible. And we do that through cross-training, through grants, through, you know, just any sort of efficiency that we can look towards within the operations of our departments. We try to find those to help us and help to limit the pressure that we place on our revenues that come in. So again, anything we can do to search for cost-saving methods and revenue generation, those are our goals. In terms of capital expenses, you'll hear me use that phrase a lot throughout the course of this presentation. A capital expense is really any equipment or building over $5,000. What we try to do is try to capture those for each of our departments over the next 10 years. So we forecasted out what those capital expenses are going to be, and that helps us to track, plan, prioritize and prepare for those expenses that may not be a part of our normal day-to-day operations. This puts us again in a really financially stable position and helps us understand what our long-term commitments will be. So again, we implemented a 10-year CIP back in 2019, and that continues to be a guide for us for both current and future financial decisions. So any decision that we make today in FY 21 in consideration of that budget, we have to make sure that that decision makes sense for the long term, and then it's not a short-sighted decision that could potentially be catastrophic or negative to the town in the long term. So again, that's, it's a very important tool for us to understand today and tomorrow and ensure we're making the best decisions for the town. So with the creation of FY 21's budget, we have some unique variables that aren't typically at play during the budget development process. For us in Cabarrus County, they just completed a tax revaluation process. So in Cabarrus County, that's done every four years. This is done to ensure that the tax values of real property closely reflects the market values. So notifications had already been made to property owners this year, earlier this year, and a property owner has the ability to appeal that new value that may be assigned to them. So again, when it's highly indicated of the market changes, so if we're in a prosperous market or financial conditions, then oftentimes you see property values increase. If you happen to do a revaluation in a recession, you may find that your property values decrease. So it's sort of an unknown of what that's going to look like every four years, but it's why they do it every four years, to ensure that there's not an extended period of time between revaluations and to make sure again that those tax values are as closely reflective of market values as they can be. Obviously, for us as a municipality, the value assigned to real property is very important for us to pay attention to because it, it obviously generates revenues for us based on our tax rate. So again, in a healthy financial market, these new revenues can be very important for us to help offset the incremental increases that we see year over year due to market or inflation increases, mostly for us related to contracted services. You in your own personal home or your personal budget can probably understand that things incrementally increase year over year, your cable bill, your telephone bill, you know, etc. So in a way, these tax revaluations help municipalities offset and adjust for those market directions related to those incremental increases. So there is some option and there are some considerations that council have in considering what to do with this tax revaluation, whether it goes up or down. So state law requires all municipalities to create and present what is referred to as a revenue-neutral budget. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on what that looks like and what that means for us. But the purpose of that is we have to show and account for any of the changes in revenue due to the county tax revaluation. Again, whether that is positive or negative, we have to reflect that and show a revenue-neutral budget. Does not mean that we have to adopt a revenue-neutral budget, just means that we have to show that to the community about what that may look like. So continuing on to outline that variable related to the tax revaluation for us specifically here in Harrisburg, the total tax-based increase for FY 21 when compared back to FY 20 is 19.61%. It's a pretty healthy tax-based growth. Of that 19.61%, roughly 5% of that growth is what we would refer to as new development growth. So actual active development that has taken place within our community over the past year. So what that means is a total impact of the county tax revaluation is roughly 14.5% for us in Harrisburg. You can see what those numerical points are in terms of new revenues generated. So the 5% in actual growth generates roughly $350,000 in new revenue, while the 14.5% growth related to the tax revaluation generates just over $1 million for FY 21. So those are considerations that we have to take in place. And that last bullet point there related to the 14.5%, that is what is reflective of the revenue-neutral tax budget that we would have to propose. So we would remove that and consider what a budget would look like if we did not have that additional tax-based growth as part of it. So again, a unique variable that we didn't expect to have in FY 21 when we were creating the budget is the COVID-19 impacts. The impacts of the pandemic are being felt currently in our FY 20 budget as we are seeing a reduction in sales tax collection and other revenue forms that we would expect to see as we complete our budget year. And we expect that those will impact us well into FY 21. There are a lot of forecasts. There's a lot of information out there, a lot of data sources that we have relied on, both our internal staff, county staff, state, and several other entities have assisted us in preparing what we feel is the most accurate forecast for us as we move forward in preparing FY 21. So we have outlined three of the largest impacts to our revenue associated with COVID-19 at the bottom of this slide. And you can see those are reflected on a reduction in ad valorem tax collection. What we mean by that is we expect fewer people to pay their tax bills on time, especially related to deferred payments. And the state of North Carolina has come out recently and offered an extension on motor vehicle tax payments. So things like that are going to mean decreased or reduced revenue collection from an ad valorem tax perspective. We also expect to continue to see a sales tax collection reduction as folks are limited and restricted into the type of business activities that they can conduct. We don't expect that that will encompass the entire FY 21 budget, but we do expect those reductions to be higher in the earlier portion of the year and incrementally increase up to either a flat or slightly positive standpoint at the end of the year. Another impact is interest income. So the town is very active in how it invests its idle cash flow. And so we are earning upwards of 2%, higher than 2% in some of our interest opportunities that we have. And fortunately, due to COVID-19 impact on the financial markets, we have seen a reduction in those interest percentages. So as a result of that, we are going to lose some interest income associated with it. So you see all of those things total there, you know, over $600,000 in their totality just for those three things. There are other factors at play here that aren't shown, that may not equate to as large a dollar amount and are more difficult to forecast. And that's related to, you know, sales of new homes or new home growth that may take place if the housing market decides to slow down or if folks become nervous about potentially moving or purchasing a new home. We could have other impacts that are, again, not as easily forecasted related to a growth impact of COVID-19. Another unique variable for us is in Cabarrus County, our sales tax distributions are made using a methodology that distributes these revenues based on the ad valorem tax rate of the county and its municipalities. So think of the sales tax as a, as a total of a pie, and each of the communities within Cabarrus County gets a portion of that pie. And the portion of that pie is heavily weighted on the individual community's ad valorem tax rate. So for example, in general, if a municipality raises its tax rate while everyone else keeps theirs the same and tax values remain the same, it will actually increase the amount of sales tax distributed to it. Conversely, if a municipality decreases its tax rate, it will see a decrease in the amount of sales tax revenue it collects. So in general, if a county and all of the municipalities maintain their respective tax rates, the distribution of that sales tax will remain consistent with previous years. So why is this a factor? For us, this is a factor when considering what other governments within the county are anticipating doing with their ad valorem tax rate. So estimating and forecasting projective, if the town were to choose to lower its tax rate while everyone else had their tax rate the same or nearly the same, the town would lose over $300,000 in sales tax annually. And this unfortunately would be a recurring loss year over year until the town raised its tax rate back to a proportionate equivalent of what it is today. So it's a relationship that we have to consider carefully because our tax rate is very important in determining the sales tax collections we get as a community. And sales tax make up a significant portion of our general fund revenues. So going a little bit deeper into a revenue-neutral budget. So a revenue-neutral budget would be prepared with the following conditions. Again, we would assume the 5% growth rate from last year, which would generate roughly $350,000 in new revenue. As a result of that, to match the revenues back in 2020, the tax rate would need to be established at $31.20 per $100 valuation. And you can compare that to the current tax rate of $35.5 per $100 valuation that we have in FY 20. So the impacts of that, what does that look like for our community moving forward? Well, unfortunately, the revenue-neutral budget and the tax revaluation came at an inopportune time related to the COVID-19 impacts. And again, we sort of outlined what those major impacts are for us, but they are just some very consequential, long-term impacts of reduced revenue related to sales tax collection and ad valorem collection in general. And a revenue-neutral tax rate has some dire consequences for the town really in the short term and in the long term. So what those are specifically and exactly are that any new budget items considered in FY 21, so as our town council and town staff prepared new budget requests and considerations for FY 21, those things were sorted out and decided by priority by the council. In a revenue-neutral budget, all of those things would be unable to be funded. Not only would they not be able to be funded in FY 21, they would not be able to be brought back in any future budget year over the next 10 years. So it's not even something of a deferral where we could defer for one or two years and bring those back for consideration in the short term. Those would be long-term budget requests that would have to be held off or denied. Unfortunately, there will also be a lack of funding to make the necessary revenue transfers to fund our capital projects throughout our 10-year plan. So in other words, we have things like equipment replacement and facility construction, whatnot, over the next 10 years. Think of large items like fire trucks or other large pieces of equipment in our public works department. Those are large capital items that we have planned and understand when those are going to come up for replacement. Unfortunately, in a revenue-neutral tax rate-type budget, we would not have the necessary revenue to fund those over the 10-year period. In addition to that, we would have to look at making operational cuts throughout the town of $250,000 to $300,000 annually. We would have to do that to ensure the long-term financial stability of both our financial model and the financial position of the town, but also to cover those needed capital items throughout that 10-year plan. So when we look at a $250,000 to $300,000 cut from operations, you're talking about significant personnel cuts, adjustments, delays, deferred items that would have to be pushed out for many, many years, not just one or two years. And unfortunately, that's where we get to the conclusion of such a dire impact and dire consequence to the town as a result. Being personnel is our largest expense that we have throughout all of our budgets. That is obviously the most, the easiest place and place where most folks look to make those cuts. And we operate relatively lean now from a personnel standpoint throughout most of our departments. So making any cuts from a personnel perspective would be pretty significant for our operations. So just kind of giving you a full picture here of the revenue impacts because we really want to pay attention to this, not only in FY 21, but moving forward. So without one here, what we refer to as known revenue impact. So we know that we have two bases for revenue growth, the 5% due to the growth that we saw in FY 20, as well as the tax revaluation opportunity there. So combined, you have just over 1 point, around $1.35 million in potential new revenues that could be available to the town depending upon what it decides to do with its tax rate. Then unfortunately, we have the negative impacts of COVID-19. And so you see the sales tax reduction of $85,000, the reduced tax collection of an estimated $300,000, the interest income loss at $252,000. Those are known impacts that we are estimating for COVID-19. And then you throw in the other estimated impact of potentially lowering our tax rate to a revenue-neutral basis, which would eliminate an additional $300,000. So what we have down in the bottom two bullet points there is really your polar ends of consideration for the council when it comes to preparing FY 21's budget and the equivalent tax rate. So the estimated net revenue impacts of going with a revenue-neutral tax rate would mean a loss of almost $600,000 in revenue for FY 21. And that's just not for FY 21. There would be some lingering extensions of those revenue losses until we raised our tax rate back up to the equivalent of what it is today. So that can have some pretty significant long-term impacts. And quite frankly, our financial model and our operations of the town aren't set up to be able to overcome a loss of $600,000 in a single year, let alone multiple years of lost revenues. So on the opposite end of that equation is the estimated net revenue impacts if we were to keep our tax rate the same at $35.5. And again, that sort of goes back and captures all of the 19% of total growth, the $1.3, $1.4 million in new revenues. You deduct out those COVID-19 impacts and you eliminate the sales tax distribution equation, and all of a sudden you have a positive input of $848,000. So again, those are sort of the polar opposites that the town council and staff had to work with. And we considered really everything in between to come up with a tax rate that was able to put us in a financial position to move forward and succeed both in the short term and the long term. So I mentioned our financial model quite frequently. And so I've got a screenshot of our financial model on the screen here. I don't expect you to be able to see all of those numbers or understand what all of those numbers mean. But if you're interested in it, our staff would love to sit down with you and walk you through what each of these mean. But it is a 10-year plan that accounts for all of our revenues and expenditures that we expect during, during this period. This, this financial model here is prepared with our revenue-neutral tax rate. And I show this because I want to make it very clear that you can see if you follow the 2020, 2021, 2022 columns, that under a revenue-neutral budget, we are able to survive. I guess survive is the word I would use. In other words, our revenues would just cover the expenditures that we would have during that time period. Our problem when we start to look at the long term is if you look towards the bottom of the page and the fourth to the last row, the surplus row. So that tells us how much money we have left over at the end of each year, revenues over expenditures that we're able to fund in future years. And you will see that those numbers start to go into the red and into the negative beginning in FY 24. And in FY 25, they go into the negative by over $1 million. And so I use this as a good, just a good opportunity to show that a revenue-neutral budget for us can be considered in the short term in FY 21 and would potentially get us through. But in the long term, it is potentially catastrophic for us. But in the long term, it is potentially catastrophic for us on a financial perspective. There is just no way for us to recover from those negative deficits that we start to experience out in '25. And so the common question is, well, okay, well, let's just, you know, bring the tax rate back up in FY22 or FY23. And we've run what that would look like in the model. And unfortunately, the lost revenues that we experienced early on in FY21 and '22 are so significant that it would require us to raise our tax rate higher than the 35.5 that we have in place now at a future year. So in other words, if we went with a revenue neutral budget or really any budget that is less than what our current tax rate is now, at some point in the future, we would have to consider raising our tax rate higher than what it is today in order to catch back up on those lost revenues. And this financial model just does a really great job of painting that picture for us to show the short-term implications are pretty significant. We would have to make some cuts and there would be some things that would not be able to be accomplished in FY21. But really, it's the long-term impact to them which makes this a significant consideration for us. So with that being said, the manager's recommended budget for the general fund is being prepared with the tax rate of 35.5 per hundred dollar valuation, which is the current tax rate. And I want to make sure that it's very clear that had it not been for the revenue impacts of COVID-19 and the potential loss of those sales tax revenues, the FY21 budget could have been considered using a lower tax rate. There's just simply no doubt about that. And I want to make sure everyone understands that these lost revenues were not expected and they were not prepared for. And we have to make sure that we're protected in the short and long term from a financial position of the town. And so this was a very difficult decision for staff to make and it was a difficult decision for the council to make. There's a lot of conversation about what, if anything, we can do to lower the tax rate or not sort of capture all of the tax revaluation growth. And again, we looked at that. We looked at our model in a number of different ways to see what could work for the short term and the long term. But the decision to prepare the budget with the tax rate equal to what it is today was necessitated by wanting to A, ensure that we maintain a high level of service delivery and that we didn't have any reduction or loss in service delivery from what we currently have today. And that we continue to maintain that the long-term financial security of the town was in good position. I don't think anyone was prepared to make a decision today that was going to put the town in a financial hardship in the future. So we understand that, you know, families and businesses right now are feeling the brunt of the COVID-19 financial impact on themselves and their own personal budgets and their individual finances with their businesses. And so we wanted to do everything that we could to ensure that that wasn't impacted as much as possible. And like I said, we considered every potential scenario, but this scenario was in our best interest, both in the short term and the long term. So an overview of what that means for the general fund moving forward is that the service levels that we provide today are expected to remain consistent. We do have a few exceptions of where there will be a couple of departments where new investments in personnel will be made so that we can continue to improve the service delivery that we have on those. But I also want to make sure it's known to the public that when we sat down with our budget requests from our department managers, they were significant. There were a significant number of new requests to continue to meet the demands of our citizens and improve the operations that we have. But the council made a very strong and concerted effort to ensure that we are being mindful of the financial decisions we made today in light of COVID-19 and those impacts. And so what we have planned as we move into FY21 is that all new or non-essential expenditures for departments will be held off until later in the budget year. So what that means is council and staff will evaluate the revenue collection, see how that's coming in, continue to monitor the impacts of COVID-19 as that data becomes available to us. And when and if that opportunity exists for us to start to move beyond sort of the core functions of departments, we will start to allow the expenditures to return to more of a budget normal perspective. And so just throwing that out there to let the public know that, you know, as of July 1, when we get a new budget year, it's, you know, there's no spending plan. There's no, you know, there's not going to be a run on new hires or new expenditures. There's going to be a concerted effort to make sure that we are in a good, strong financial position before we make any of those decisions in the new budget year. And it may be that some of those new items or some of those functions that we would have typically liked to have done are held off in the budget year again, until the financial forecast and the financial condition of the town puts us in a better position to do that. We also had to make changes to our capital expenditures, our CIP, our 10-year plan that I mentioned earlier. We had to push some things off. Again, as a result of the reduced revenues that we're experiencing, the timing of those things just did not allow them to happen in the years in which we had expected or had hoped for them to happen. So we're making decisions and pushing off things, not only impacting FY21, but also the future years for the next five or six years down the road. We're going to have some impacts to our ability to move through some of those plans like we had intended to. But we feel very confident that the budget that we have in place gives us the opportunity and puts us in the best position to do that moving forward. So in saying that, this slide here is a reflection of our financial model with maintaining our tax rate at the same level as it is today. And you'll see that, you know, in that surplus line down, again, that fourth line from the bottom and throughout every line item in this, on the funding perspective, we were maintaining a positive financial position. So at no time do our expenses outweigh our revenues we have to fund those. And I think this, when you compare this financial model to the previous one, I think it gives you all the information that you need to understand why we made the decisions that we made. So as far as new items for the general fund in FY21, when we sat down with the department managers, there were 19 new or reclassified positions that were requested from staff. For FY21, only nine of those positions, either new or reclassified, are going to be funded. And so these speak really highly of the priorities of the town council when it comes to developing this budget. Just two years ago, we added three firefighters to improve the number of personnel that we have riding on a truck at any given moment. And so we're coming back and we're continuing our efforts to improve those numbers and ensure that we have as many firefighters as we can on those trucks at any given time with a goal of having four firefighters on a truck at all times. So we do propose to bring on three new firefighter positions in the FY21 budget. Also related to public safety, through our contract with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, we plan to add two additional deputies, again, to just increase the level of service and number of deputies that we have available to us patrolling at any given time. And within the public works department, we have three new positions there. The first being a mechanic technician. This is a position that would serve all of our town fleet and making sure that, you know, the mechanically sound and kept in top working order. And this helps us to save long-term on the maintenance and upkeep of those vehicles and of the fleet. We also have a utility system supervisor in the public works department that will help oversee the water and sewer utility. We have a current employee that will be nearing retirement soon. So we want to onboard a physician to work with them and help with a succession plan and oversight of that transition. And then a part-time administrative assistant does all public work staff and their daily duties. We also will be approving the reclassification of our current part-time information technology help desk technician to a full-time position. We will also be allocating funds for parks and recreation field monitors. So that would be a group of part-time employees that will assist in oversight of our athletic programs during the weekends to limit the impacts to current full-time staff. In terms of capital projects and expenses in the general fund, it's fairly limited in comparison to past capital budget years. And I think that's indicative of the COVID-19 impacts and just all of the things that we have going on right now. But those can be broken down here. We have parks and recreation projects. So really that boils down to things like greenways, small projects within existing parks. We also have an objective to deconstruct the existing farm mill, the actual farm mill building on Farm Mill Road that is currently unfortunately deteriorating with every passing year. And so what we want to try to do is deconstruct that building, salvage it to the best of our abilities and potentially gear up to use that in a future capacity in a future year. We have public safety equipment as well. So really that's mostly vehicles for our fire department and our sheriff's department as we replace aging, aging the equipment in each of those. We also have a leaf truck replacement. So as we continue to add street mileage and number of new customers who need and utilize our yard debris collection services, we are in need of a replacement truck for our existing fleet. We also have close to a half a million dollars in road and resurfacing projects that have been identified in FY21. We also have a small dump truck replacement in public works. And then miscellaneous vehicles, these are going to be vehicles throughout all of town, whether that's administration, parks and recreation, public works, et cetera. So as you can see, a total of about $1.6 million on capital projects and expenses in FY21. A lot of those have been previously planned and discussed projects. So from a revenue source perspective, I mentioned it earlier, where we get our money from. And as you can see, property taxes make up a bulk of that at 58%. The other orange slice there, intergovernmental, those are things like sales tax. So in property tax, sales tax, those are our largest portions of our revenue sources throughout the town and we rely heavily on those. So when we see, you know, 5%, 8%, 10% reduction in those where we had anticipated seeing 4% or 5% growth on those revenues, that net impact of those losses is really significant for us. And so we have to be mindful of that and it certainly drives the decisions that we make. So I know customers often want to understand, well, what does it mean to me? What does the tax rate impact to myself and to, you know, my bill that I'm going to receive in the mail? And so the top chart there shows our 35.5 tax rate based on the taxable asset. So the average home value in Harrisburg is just over $250,000. So we use that $250,000 number frequently to kind of figure out what's the average impact. So here in Harrisburg, if you have a $250,000 home, your tax rate or your tax bill from the town will generate an $888 tax bill from the town. So when we consider what does that mean to the Cabarrus County tax revaluation? And so this is more complicated to communicate to the public because everyone's individual tax revaluation could be different. For instance, my tax value of my property could have increased by 5%, but my neighbor down, two blocks down or in a neighboring community, his could have gone up by 15%. And so each individual's tax value again is going to be unique to their parcel and unique to their property. And everybody should have been made aware from Cabarrus County of what their tax value increase was. So what we decided to do was create this chart down below that shows the value increase. So you can sort of get an idea of what sort of bill increase you might incur by us keeping the tax rate the same, but your property value going up. And so for instance, most of our community is going to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of that 14%. I think it's probably the average residential increase that most of our residents would see. So you're seeing a bill increase of roughly $124 if your property was valued at $250,000. I hope that sort of makes sense on that and gives us a good flow of the total impact. So now when we look at how we compare to others throughout the county, this is just a great opportunity for us to see what is our tax rate? What other fees do we have in place that other communities have access to, that we have access to? Then, and what does that mean when you're comparing? What does it cost to live in Harrisburg versus what it costs to live in Concord or Kannapolis or Mount Pleasant? And so this is a good, of course, each of our communities is unique. So, you know, we know that the services that Midland provides are not the same as the services that Harrisburg provides. And the things that Harrisburg provides aren't the same as what Concord provides. So it's not a direct apples-to-apples comparison, but it is a good, a good reference point for us to understand what it costs to live in our community. So you can see again with our 35.5 tax rate, we do not utilize a motor vehicle fee or a solid waste fee where others throughout the county do. So outside of the town of Midland, Harrisburg is the quote-unquote cheapest place to live in the town from a tax and fee perspective. Again, Midland's tax rate is significantly lower than ours for many reasons, but public safety being a huge driver of that, where they do not have full-service fire and police as the town of Harrisburg does. But just a unique comparison there for everyone across the board to understand our, how we compare to others in the community. So now I'm going to move to our water and sewer fund. So for our water and sewer fund, again, this is an enterprise fund activity of the town. We do expect service delivery to remain consistent with FY21. We don't expect any major increases or decreases to that service level when we don't have any major changes proposed from past years or our 10-year plan that we have in place. So back in 2019, the council adopted a water and sewer rate resolution that identified a rate increase every two years that was necessary to support the long-term needs of the water and sewer department. And this was put in place mostly to cover the annual contract increases that we inherit from the third-party water purchase vendor and wastewater treatment vendor. So we get about 95% of our water from the city of Concord that we have to purchase. And all of our wastewater is treated by WASAC, which is a county sewer treatment facility that all of the municipalities throughout the county utilize. So with those come rates associated with those water purchase and wastewater treatment. And we have been seeing a 5% and 4% increases from each of those entities respectively, year over year for the past several years. And what we want to do is ensure that at no time do we have to go back to our customers and implement a double-digit percentage rate increase on our water and sewer rates. So the council adopted this water and sewer rate resolution that will agree to increase the rates every two years. Since we just did a rate increase back in FY20, the proposed budget is prepared with no rate or feature changes related to the water sewer fund for FY21. So again, I want to reiterate that, that the rates will remain consistent with what they are in FY20. There is a lot of pressure on us on the water and sewer fund, just like there is on the general fund from lost revenues. And I'll describe those in a minute, but we were able to push off some things and change some things within our plans of our water and sewer department to ensure that we not need to do a rate increase. System development charges are another fee that we charge to new customers or developers that come and add on to our system. And those fees are used to help us fund future needs of the utility so they can help us fund debt service, extensions, whatnot. Obviously, if a new development comes in, they are 100% responsible for their costs of those, the installation of those water lines and meters and whatnot. But in addition to that, they also pay us this fee that helps us maintain and operate our system into the future. But those fees are not proposed to be changed with the FY21 budget. So some of the major impacts, these are things both from a revenue perspective as well as a cost perspective for us that we foresee in the water and sewer fund. Again, I mentioned earlier, the continued increases from our service contracts with Concord and WASAC. For us in FY21, the city of Concord is increasing our water purchase rate by 4%. And WASAC is increasing our wastewater treatment cost by 2.4%. So collectively, that's almost 200, over $200,000 in additional new expenses that the utility has to overcome without doing anything at all, but simply continuing to purchase and treat the water as we would. Again, COVID-19 unfortunately is going to have some interesting impacts to our water. Again, COVID-19 unfortunately is going to have some interesting impacts to our water and sewer fund. The state is considered and has already implemented deferred utility billing on certain fees. And so we were unsure of what that's going to look like into the future and how long that is going to last. So there may be some unpaid or deferred utility bills that will mean a loss in revenue. Again, just like the general fund, there's a lost in investment income that we will not be able to see as a result of the lowered interest rates. And again, we really don't know what our total growth is going to be. So our new growth actually helps support our water and sewer utility system, just like it does on the general fund side in that these new homes assist in generating revenue without driving a lot of expense on our side to provide that service to them. So again, a lot of changes, a lot of impacts. We did make changes to that 10-year capital plan to ensure the the long-term financial stability of the utility. And what that means is that some of those projects were postponed or we decided to lower the investment in infrastructure, infrastructure upgrades that we had planned. So again, all in an effort to maintain financial stability throughout the long term. There are positions that are proposed to be filled. These were mentioned earlier in the general fund and you see the note there, cost allocated. That means that those positions derive expenditures expenditures from both funds. So there will be expenses that will be allocated both to the water and sewer fund and the general fund for those positions. So some key capital projects that we have identified for FY21 are listed here. First being our contribution for the Hickory Ridge Elementary School water line. So as that new school comes online, we have a an allocation or a participation cost associated with that. We also intend to move towards getting utilities out to the area we refer to as Morehead West. So this is the area that is located literally west of Morehead Road. It's mostly undeveloped at this time and goes all the way to the Mecklenburg County line. And so just getting and upgrading the utilities in that area is a very important venture for us. And with that comes some sewer pump decommissionings along the way. So we have a Leatherwood sewer pump decommissioning that's also associated with that project. Also in the Britley subdivision, Britley is not within the town limits, but we do provide that that community with water and sewer. So there's a sewer pump decommissioning that's associated with that. Design costs for future water line improvements. So again, we have these things forecasted out for the next 10 years. And so we begin design costs associated with future improvements now so that when it comes time to fund those, we're ready to go and go to construction on those. And again, additional sewer pump decommissionings and water and sewer upgrades across the utility are going to be a large driver in capital projects that we have outlined in FY21. So it gets up there pretty quickly when you consider these multimillion dollar projects. So you can see just over $6 million in total capital projects planned in FY21 for the water and sewer fund. So as you might imagine, sales and services, so the utility bills that each of our customers get each month, that is 96% of our revenues. Very limited revenues come beyond that permit and fees and other. Again, those are more reflective of system development charges and whatnot. So it's very critical that we collect sales or the utility bill payment in a timely manner. And again, the impact of COVID-19, some of the impacts the state's guidelines have put in place make that a little bit of an unknown for us. Here's an example of the financial model that we have in place for the water and sewer fund. And as you can see, we're in in really good shape for that fund throughout the course of the model. Our final fund that we will be reviewing tonight is our stormwater fund. Again, these are rates that are charged with each of our water and sewer bill. That's where they show up for each of our customers. And those can only be used to fund stormwater improvement or infrastructure projects. So for FY21, we don't have any rate increase proposed for the stormwater fee. We'll be able to continue to address projects that we have in the pipeline. Those projects, we typically refer to them as system A. Those are improvements that we are working on in the old Harrisburg area that we look to complete through FY22. I also have a regional detention pond that was originally planned for FY20. We've moved that to FY21, but that is solely dependent upon potential new development in town center. So when or if that does happen, we'll trigger that investment in that pond. We also intend to hire a consultant to create a stormwater rate model that will help us understand our opportunities in the future, moving forward with those funding of those stormwater projects. Right now, we simply don't bring enough revenue in on the stormwater side to fund the amount of projects that we have. So we're looking at a tiered rate system that would be put in place that would basically have a higher rate for properties with a higher level of impervious surface area. So any changes obviously would need to come before the town council. We are not proposing any fee changes or tiered rate system with the proposed budget. But those are things that will be communicated to council and council will have those opportunities as we work towards next year. There is the stormwater model, just to give you an example of how that fund is set up. Really not a lot of detail or anything of worth noting here, but if anyone has any questions on those, we'll be glad to answer those. And here's just really a high-level overview of comparing our budgets from FY20 to FY21. So we've got them separated here in the columns. If you follow the columns, you can see the general fund, water and sewer fund, stormwater fund. We have them all detailed there specifically. And we're just trying to show the full picture of the entire budget and what makes up our whole budget altogether. And so we want to show the differences when we talk about, hey, what's changing from last year to this year? So you can see from an operations perspective in the general fund, there were very little changes in general government. However, due to the investments in the fire department, the deputies and some of the other personnel adds that we've had, you see some changes in those categories. And then we move over to the total. Total is going to be both operations and capital. So anything that we're doing from a general operation of that department as well as any capital item, you can see where we are investing our monies and what those differences are from one to the other. So in total, our general fund budget is increasing from FY20 by about 5.8% or roughly $874,000. Again, most of that is related to the additional personnel that we have decided to onboard for our public safety departments. In our water and sewer fund, you can see that that budget increased from last year by 4.7% or just over $450,000. Again, as that utility grows and we onboard new customers, that's that's expected. It is expected that each year that fund's budget will grow 3%, 4%, or 5% year over year. And so just wanted to present that in a total picture for everyone to be able to see. Now, when we talk about budgeting for all funds, again, I mentioned earlier, we have about a dozen accounts there for different funds. And it just went to again, show that this is more reflective of information that you would see in our budget ordinance. And so when the budget ordinance is presented, that is actually included in the manager's recommended budget and will be adopted by the council in June, this is information that's reflective on that. So you can see the total budget for FY21 is just over $74 million. You compare that to the FY20 budget of $80 million. And you'll see that the total difference in the budgets from year to year is a reduction of $6.4 million. So a lot of information, a lot of high-level data on this particular side. And so if there's any questions, you know, certainly feel free to reach out to staff and we will be glad to answer those. So the town is also required to adopt a fee schedule. And that really outlines all of the potential fees that we would charge any customer, any resident for anything throughout the year. And so we adopt this annually with our budget. And the fee schedule for us in FY21 is going to remain largely consistent with last year's fee schedule, with the exception of the addition of a few fees. So the first one there is the addition of an annexation fee of $50 per application. And then we have some parks and recreation type fee adjustments where we've included, now that we will have new amenities or expect that new amenities will be brought onboard with Harrisburg Park, we wanted to allocate some fees associated with rentals of the large shelter, rentals of the amphitheater area, and then any charges associated with use of the splash pad. Residents will be allowed to use the splash pad at no cost, but there will be a charge for non-residents associated with that amenity. And finally, in getting to our next steps, again, now that the manager's recommended budget has been presented to council, we'll make it available to the public on the town's website. So you should be able to find that tomorrow. It's actually included on the agenda for tonight's meeting as well, but we'll make that easily accessible on the website. If anyone wishes to have a copy, a physical copy of the budget, please just let us know and we'll be sure to get that to you. We also expect that our June 8th town council meeting will be another virtual meeting. At least that's the assumption that we are basing our planning on right now. And so we will bring this back again in June. We will hold a public hearing in June, at which time, you know, it'll be an opportunity for the public to comment and ask questions. But following some direction that we received late last week from the school of government and the state, we will actually decide to recess the public hearing at our June 8th meeting and reopen it again at a future date. And so that date hasn't yet to be decided, so we'll work with the town council to determine a date that works best for them on that. It could be as soon as the next day or a couple of days following that June 8th meeting. But we will have a second opportunity to continue that public hearing to get feedback from the public. And the state has given us that direction to ensure that there's a second opportunity for public input in the event that there's technical difficulties or whatever related to the virtual meeting platforms that we are using, being that folks cannot meet with us in person. So that is a unique change for us, but again, it gives us a great opportunity for the public to have two opportunities to participate and provide us that feedback. So with that said, I will turn it over to any council members or we'll start, I guess, with council members with any questions or comments. And then we can open it up to the the public forum to to see if there's any from those folks.
Andrew on Smith. I just want to thank you and your staff for working with us on this budget and the five that I've five budgets that I've worked on. Certainly this one was probably the most challenging, given all the situations that we've gone through this year. So thank you. Thanks to your staff.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that. All right, I am going to turn it over to our IT staff to see if we can enable.
And that's always going to work for those that are actually looking at the screen, right? They're dialed in on the bridge line. They're not going to be able to raise their hand. All right. So we're going to start with, if you're on the on the Zoom and actually can see the content, we're going to go to the hand raises first. So I see the first one is Sonia Harden. So Sonia, if you would like to ask a question to the town manager on this current budget, that'd be great. If you come off mute, I think you just won't. There you go.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. The first one regarding the restricted funds that you said was for transportation. Would that include funds that could be used for sidewalks?
Yes, that is a you can use power bill funding for, let me, let me make sure I get that correct. It depends. So the restricted revenue on the power bill side is reflective of transportation funding mostly. We typically use that for road paving projects only. We do have the transportation bond that we've recently approved. And so there's a significant portion of that that will be related to sidewalk construction. So we don't use those power bill dollars for sidewalks because we have the transportation funding available to help us support those sidewalk projects that we've identified.
My next question is, it looks like the biggest chunk of your budget is going toward recreation, parks and recreations. And I'm just wondering why that receives a higher percentage of the budget than items surrounding safety such as police and firefighters.
Yeah, I can get you a, let's see if I can get to that slide that will identify that. Should be able to move to the end here. If you'll bear with me one second. All right, this slide here should give us that. I'm having to move things around on my screen here so that I can see them. So if you follow this slide here, you'll see that the the deputies and the fire, especially the fire department specifically, are significantly more invested than the Parks and Recreation Department.
But the deputies are not.
Correct. The deputies are through a contract that we have with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. And so we fund about 15 officers right now through them and obviously get to save significantly by not having any administration-type costs associated with that. On the Parks and Recreation side too, it's important to remember that a lot of those expenses are associated with athletic programs. I don't know the exact breakout of the athletic part of the Parks and Recreation, but it is a it is a very significant portion of that. And our athletic programs are offset by the revenues that they bring in related to registration fees. So while the expenses may be high on the operations of the Parks and Recreation budget, it's offset significantly by revenues that we bring in that offset those. Whereas other departments of the talent, like so Parks and Recreation can potentially be a revenue generating department for us, but things like fire and deputies and planning and administration, those are not revenue generating departments for us, unfortunately. So those are pure expenses associated with it.
I guess my concern was the number of homeless people that I've seen moving toward Harrisburg as far as coming closer than I've ever seen them before. And so I was just surprised to see parks and recreation continuing to go up as far as cost and why that didn't remain flat when, you know, you have other things that are really taking a cut, actually.
Yeah.
The council and communications and I mean, I just, it just seems odd to me. Over the years, as I've looked at other town budgets, this seems like a high percentage to me. I've just moved here to the area and have only been in this part of Cabarrus County for a short period of time, but it just seems higher than normal to me. I know the trend across the country is a decrease in the number of high school students. And I'm just wondering if you've taken a look at the census and what the census is and how that will play out over the next 10 years as you're making your your budget. I would recommend looking at that. And then my last question had to do with stormwater projects, the funding for that. I guess you've made plans on how you're going to divvy out that money. My new property that I just purchased, I've I've spent $12,000 to date on drainage and putting in an area for stormwater. So as you begin to look at what homeowners are doing to ensure water runs off away from homes, you know, when you talk about the potential tiered approach to how you'll charge for stormwater, I hope you'll take into consideration the amount of money that some homeowners have put into already trying to ensure their house doesn't sink.
Yeah, sure. So I'll try to to address those. So I understand what you're saying on as far as the operations increase of the Parks and Recreation budget. So I'll start there. So I've got the slide pulled up here that shows a 17% increase in the operations of the Parks and Recreation Department, which roughly $330,000. A bulk of that is related to the debt service payment on Harrisburg Park. So we just started and are in the final stages of a $10 million improvement to Harrisburg Park. And so as a result of that, we have a debt service payment that will now kick in for us FY '21 to pay for that. So that difference from FY '20 to FY '21 is mostly seen in that new debt service payment. And then that follows over when you look at the overall budget for the department. We actually are not making very many significant investments in the Parks and Recreation Department outside of those projects that I mentioned earlier related to the Greenway construction and the salvaging of the farm mill facility. So really, other than that, the operations of that department remain very consistent. And like I mentioned, they do bring in a lot of revenue for us that helps offset those costs. But I can certainly understand when you look at this, you may you may question that. So very good, very good observation from that standpoint. As far as the stormwater goes, so what we are trying to do is make available some funding for property owners that if we can identify that there is a publicly, there's a problem there with the stormwater infrastructure that is of the public's doing or, you know, whether that's from roads or we have easements or pipe failures or infrastructure failure or whatever it may be, we want to give those property owners the opportunity to have some assistance in repairing those. To go further than that, last year, the town council agreed to onboard a grading inspector for us that their specific role is to go out and inspect new development, new properties that are being developed in the town and ensure that the drainage on those properties throughout the whole lot is positive so that they're not getting ponding of water or pooling of water or that they are creating a negative impact to their neighbor. Prior to us onboarding that position last year, we did not have such authority and we were reliant on Cabarrus County to make those types of inspections for us. And not, you know, certainly no disrespect to Cabarrus County and their inspection program, but they didn't look at the entire lot. They only looked within five feet outside of the perimeter of the the structure, the the home. And so we wanted to go a little bit further than that and ensure that all of our new development was coming through without these negative drainage issues that we have. So I'm not sure, you know, where you live or what what type of home you purchased, but it has certainly been something that has come to our attention over the last couple of years. And we've made those investments to ensure that those types of problems are limited moving forward.
Yes, it's a new home on Autumn Lane that was purchased in January.
Yep, I'm familiar with your with your home.
Thank you. That was all my questions and I appreciate your time.
And a lot when you saw the stormwater A project listed under the stormwater piece. Again, I mentioned that that's in our, what we refer to as our old Harrisburg area. So Autumn Lane Candy Stick is a road there that's just recently received a stormwater improvement project. So you're getting ready to see a lot of new infrastructure be put in place. Things go underground with piping that are all investments that we're looking to make into your community to help ease those stormwater issues.
You spoke about utility relocation expense. Is that something you have to apply for? Or is that funds that have been set aside for projects that have already been planned?
That's a commitment that we made with the North Carolina Railroad Project that came through the town eight or three years ago. So we had some utility relocation commitments associated with that project. And those are a long-term commitment that we have on that. So that's just mentioned because it's a large capital expense that we have. But that's something that has already been done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So Jenny Lido, I see you asked the questions in the chat. I can read them for you or if you can read them, but your choice.
I'm muted. Thank you.
I'm happy to read them or if you if you would like to, you certainly can.
No, my questions are for Haynes and I'll just cover the ones that Sonia didn't already ask.
Okay.
So so hey, I can't remember if it was the last year at Budget Time or maybe even a little before that. The town council had approved $50,000 to spend on doing a study to determine whether or not we should bring the police department in-house or leave it where it is. Did that study ever get concluded and did we receive any results?
Yeah, great question. So we are actually in the process of completing that study now. So we onboarded a consultant who has helped us work through that process. Unfortunately, the COVID-19 impacts have slowed their results down pretty significantly. They're in the final phases of development of that plan that will be presented to council and the public. But where they're at right now in their in their plan is understanding if and when the town decides to move in that direction that we have partners available that will assist us on some of the detailed or specialty type services that a law enforcement department would have to enact. So those conversations have to be taken or have to take place with other entities throughout our region. And with the COVID-19 impacts, those conversations and the detail associated with those have stalled, obviously, as those departments are, you know, focused right now on just getting through for their community and ensuring that their departments continue to operate in this difficult time. So unfortunately, we're a little bit more delayed than we would have liked to have been on that. We had actually expected the results of that to be provided to us in February. But we're eyeing hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days, depending upon, you know, COVID-19 closures and whatnot, whether or not we can complete that. But it is in the process of being done now and we look forward to sharing that with the public when we can.
Okay, and on that front, you had mentioned when you were walking through, if you can stay on this page, that's fine because I see that the deputies are earning $1,300,000, you know, in their salaries and for 15 guys, women, that's 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 like $90,000 a year. That seems fair. But you also mentioned when you were running through the budget that we were going to be purchasing some new vehicles for the sheriff's department. So we that figure there, that 1.3 just covers the salaries. Now, how much, how many vehicles have we purchased? How much, how many are we depreciating on the town council's books? And what kind of value do they have?
Yeah, so great question. So yeah, you'll you picked that up perfectly. When you look at the 1.359 million that we spend on, that's the operations. So that is mostly salary, but it's also any supplies. They might need training, equipment, things like that. So there are things outside of just salaries in that number. But you're right, most of it is salaries. When you follow over on the total side, that's when you get into the capital side. And right now for FY '21, we have, I believe it's four vehicles that we have proposed to purchase for them. So that will be two for the new deputies that have been approved. And it will be two for us to replace aging vehicles that we currently have in our fleet. Those vehicles range from $55,000 to $60,000 when you consider the vehicle and all of the equipment that goes in on computers and whatnot. So we do have four vehicles planned for the deputies department in FY '21.
I'm just interested in knowing from an accounting standpoint, if we're paying for a service rendered, why are we owning the vehicles?
I think because it gives us the opportunity to control the replacement of those vehicles. It also gives us control over things like insurance and claims and maintenance and upkeep of those vehicles. Give you a good example. So Cabarrus County has adopted a vehicle replacement plan where they replace their deputy vehicles every four years, or at least that's their intent. For us here locally, just due to the limited mileage, because Harrisburg is obviously a much smaller geographic area to cover than maybe a patrol officer who covers the county, we are able to get more years of service out of our vehicles than the county can. So we can get seven, eight, nine years out of a vehicle versus four years. So by us controlling when we purchase those vehicles, it actually saves us money and we're able to control those and then reassign those vehicles once they're done with their useful life in the law enforcement department. For example, we here in the administration department inherit many of the vehicles that were formerly police vehicles and we use those in our administration department for, you know, travel and training and whatnot. So it really is economical for us to to maintain ownership of those.
All right. So it'll be interesting to see when the study comes back in because if we already have the vehicles, they're on our books and we already have the salaries of the police officers accounted for and their training and their supplies, then the only thing that's not accounted for would be an actual building for them to work out of, correct?
Well, mostly. So there are a lot of details to it and I'll be glad to follow up with you offline. If you want more detail on it, I'll be glad to get.
I'll just be interested in seeing the study when it comes out.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing I will make this point is, you know, we get a lot of benefits from the sheriff's department that we don't pay for. For instance, communications, so like our dispatch. Right now, we don't have any charges for dispatch. We, you know, things like specialty units, like the bomb squad, K-9, VICE, any major crime investigations. Those kinds of things are provided to us by the sheriff's department that don't come to us with a cost associated with them. So if we were to establish our own department, those would be services that we would have to figure out how we provide those, whether that's through a contract or whether that's establishing it ourselves internally. There would be some additional costs to the town creating its own police department. But to your point, we'll wait and see what the the study reveals to us on that front.
Okay, thank you, Steve. That answers all of my questions.
Very good. Thank you. Christopher Barfield, I'm not sure if you're on still, but he did chat a question on the average tax increase. Was that $124? And then what is the the keeping the revaluation dollars that quite to from a cent on the tax rate? And he put 4.5.
Yep. So I think this this slide here, I don't know if Mr. Barfield can see it or not, but the based on the average property value in Harrisburg of $250,000, a 14% increase, which is what we believe is going to be the average increase that most of our residents are going to see would equate to a bill increase of $124.
And what is that equate to and sent on the sales, on the tax rate?
To answer that question would be going back to the actual dollars that are generated by the tax revaluation. So the $1.009 million that would be reflected in the the new value would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about four, four and a half pennies on the tax rate.
Got it.
Thank you, Hank.
All right. So we're going to, unless you're raising your hand and I don't see it, we're going to go to the callers who do not see any hand raises or have the ability to raise hands. So if you have any questions, we'll try to just we'll pick you up as we hear them. All right, sounds like we're done with the questions. Last call. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I'm great. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move to public comment. And why don't we do it similarly? We're going to go with the hand raises first or any chats in the window. And then we'll go to those that are on the phone that do not have the ability to see what we're doing. So we can at least try to have it arranged chaos. This is for public comment. Anything you wish to address, council? Keeping it, do not make it personal in nature or just stick to a subject and we'll open it up now. And if you state your name and address, please, for the record, I keep forgetting that. Sorry. So we'll go with, actually, we'll just go freestyle because it doesn't seem, I don't have anybody raising their hand. So I'll just open it up and we'll try to capture the first person that speaks. Diane, I think I see a hand raise. Scrolling, sorry. Diane? Can I mute?
Oh, there we go. Sorry. And I noticed that it's recording. Is there going to be a recording available for this?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone wishing to address council before we move on? Does anybody see any new messages? Elizabeth's email I submitted to council email address for public comment able to be read?
Yes, will be. At public comment.
At public comment.
We're at public comment?
Yes. So. Do you want to read it?
I've got a list.
Yep. All right, we're going to go to our town manager for what was emailed in.
All right, guys. So I have a group of emails that appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to use that avenue to provide these comments to us and get us these feedback in this virtual scenario that we have. So we created an email address, in case anyone is unaware, that folks can provide their public comments to and we will read those out loud and they will become part of the minutes of the meeting and consideration of the council. So I do have a handful of them here. So I'll start with the very first one. The first one is from Daniel Baker. I do not have an address for Mr. Baker, but Mr. Baker's email reads, "Please open the businesses in this town as soon as possible. There is nothing to fear. Do not use your temporary power to hurt the residents of this town further. Thank you, Daniel Baker, resident." Next email I have is from Elizabeth Nirvana. Elizabeth's email reads, "Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Nirvana. I reside at 4024 Center Place Drive here in Town Center. I would ask that this be submitted for public comment portion of this coming Monday night's council meeting. I noticed the below item was on the agenda to be discussed under Old Business." Item reads 5A, "Consideration of Town's Expired Stay-at-Home Order." The town's stay-at-home order expired on April 29th, along with the rest of Cabarrus County and its municipalities, which allows the state's current stay-at-home order to be in full effect. Council would like to discuss further whether the town should put a more restrictive stay-at-home order in place. An update with data will be provided to council by staff." For the record, so she was just quoting there in that email, the agenda item for the meeting. So this is her comments now. "For the record, I would like to state that I am against any further restrictions being placed on the residents or businesses of Harrisburg, though I personally feel even the governor's restrictions go too far and are far too lengthy as compared to the actual threat. The idea that Harrisburg would be considering and discussing possibly adding more restrictive plans for our community is very disconcerting. As today, Friday, 5:08 at 11:00 a.m., Johns Hopkins University lists 333 confirmed cases of COVID-19 for Cabarrus County with 17 deaths. Per the NCDHHS's congregate living data posted on May 5th, 12 of Cabarrus's 17 deaths are from those housed in congregate living situations. Mayor Shawshaw posted data for Harrisburg yesterday stating that Harrisburg had 30 cases of the virus. Comparing our 30 cases to NCDHHS's info, 24 of the 30 are from one congregate living facility alone. When considering the data actually at hand to consider further stay-at-home orders or other restrictions for the residents and businesses of Harrisburg is not in anyone's best interest, I ask that you consider both the financial and mental well-being of your citizens as well as the future prosperity and success of Harrisburg's small businesses and whatever determination you come to. Thank you, Elizabeth Nirvana." Next comment was submitted to us by Patricia Richardson. I do not have an address for Ms. Richardson either, but her email reads, "I am voicing my opinion on two items on Monday meeting agenda. Please do not continue or strengthen stay-at-home order any longer. All the small businesses in town need to reopen now. Also, please do not cancel July 4th completely. Some downsizing and/or spreading activities among all city parks would be okay. But this town in particular and the country in general need the celebration of our independence, which is little by little being taken away from us all." Next email I will read is from Katie Kaiser. Katie's address is the Utopia Salon Spa and Tan at 112-3 Morris Drive in Harrisburg. Her email reads, "To whom it may concern, I am the owner of Utopia Salon in Harrisburg, North Carolina, and have a team of five fellow licensed beauty professionals. What does it mean to be a licensed beauty professional in North Carolina? It means that we went to school full-time, 40 hours a week for an entire year plus to get 1,500 clinical hours, then passed a two-phase exam including rigid safety and sanitation to provide we to prove we knew our." then passed a two-phase exam including rigid safety and sanitation to provide we, or to prove we knew our stuff. We are licensed to touch people. That is a privilege that very few professions have and one that we in our state take very seriously. So seriously that the state comes into my salon at random and expect, and inspects my facilities with a fine-tooth comb. There are major fines for non-compliance and they are not lenient. We are trained and prepared to protect you from infectious disease transmission from ourselves and from others. We literally train for this our entire careers. Long before we were concerned about COVID-19, I was worried about HIV, MRSA, STP, tuberculosis, and more. For you, one of the safest places you could possibly be is in my chair with me. And we have been forced to stay home because we are in date, we are a dangers to society. This is such a joke. Grocery stores are disgusting and crowded. Lowe's and Home Depot are disgusting and crowded. None of these places are trained and licensed to keep you safe like we are. Forcing us to close is a misguided feel-good measure that is protecting no one, but is bankrupting salon professionals. I humbly and respectfully ask that you do not vote to further restrict our industry. We are trained to protect you and we will protect you. We are essential." Final email that I have is from Bonnie Caskey. I do not have an address for Bonnie Caskey, but she signs her, her email with Caskey Photography. Her email reads, "Hello, town council members. Thank you for your service to our beautiful city. I wanted to reach out as a local small business owner regarding your discussion this evening. On the agenda under five, old business A, council would like to, to discuss further whether the town should put a more restrictive stay-at-home order in place. I am a photographer in Harrisburg. This year I lost my entire spring calendar, which included a school, a daycare, and bookings every weekend. Very few of those bookings will be able to be rescheduled. I'm also the wife, daughter, and sister of a local small business owners in Harrisburg and Charlotte. The stay-at-home orders have been devastating to our businesses. My husband, brother, and father have spent their lives building their businesses. They are trustworthy, good people. We want to keep our clients healthy. Small business owners are hardworking and wise. They should be trusted to open and operate their businesses. We understand that the novel coronavirus is dangerous to some and has been heartbreaking for many families. We understand the initial lockdown was to slow the spread. That goal has been achieved. We cannot continue under the stay-at-home orders and expect our livelihoods to survive. We ask that you would not put more restrictive stay-at-home orders in place in Harrisburg." That is all that I have, uh, at this point.
I have a couple more that popped up. Um, the location of this video specifically, James, could you? I know you said website, but if you can, if you can put it in the chat window, that'd be perfect.
No, uh, yeah, generally we, uh, after a couple of days, we get uploaded to Zimio, Vimeo and, and link it to our website.
Okay. So the person that asked if you caught that, um, it's definitely been on the website. And we did get, catch a question on the weather was tied to the budget, but I'm gonna ask it anyway and let Haynes answer it. "Are developer impact fees limited to a max amount of by state law or can they can, they be increased as a potential revenue source to offset additional property taxes?"
Okay, two parts to that question. I'll answer the first question being the system development charges related to, uh, new water and sewer customers. Uh, mostly you see that in, uh, developments that come to the town. So, uh, the state does outline a methodology for which the system development charge is created. So there is a maximum amount that can be charged per fee. Um, we have not, uh, reached that max. We are very close to the maximum charge that, uh, is allowed under the state statutes. Uh, but, uh, you know, that, so that answers that question. Yes, there is a maximum. There's a methodology for it. Uh, we are very close to that maximum allowed charge, uh, to those developers. Now, to answer the second question in terms of how that correlates to the tax rate of the town. Uh, that's where I go back to the fund accounting that I mentioned early in the presentation that as a municipality, we are, all of our money doesn't come in and is in the same pot and can be dispersed out to whatever fund or expense that we want it to go to. Uh, our water and sewer funds, uh, which are made up of those system development charges can only be spent on water and sewer services, operations, and expenditures. Uh, so it has no correlation to the tax rate at all, um, unfortunately. So, uh, everything, uh, is so separate on the water and sewer side versus what we do with the tax rate. Um, that we don't, we don't consider any, um, uh, to be one or the other or have a relationship with the two. Hope that answers that question.
I'll do a quick scan for hand raises and if anybody on the phone, um, would just like to speak up before we move on to the next section. I'm not seeing any more hand raises and no more chats. Last call.
Hi, this is Diane Murphy and I live at four one one two Carl Palmer. Um, I don't know if it was discussed. I'm new to the, trying to get into this active politics stuff. So, um, we discussed at one of the town hall meetings, the Eastwood Project and the new development. And you were gonna send some surveyors out and they have, they have a new contractor, grade or whatever. And they're doing a lot of work, but we still have quite a bit of swampy area in the back. Did you have any follow-up from that? And if this is not the right place to answer, ask it, that's okay.
Yeah, great question, Diane. I don't know the specifics to it. I know we did communicate to, uh, the audience that night that we were gonna have a, a meeting in the near future with the developer on that. I don't know the outcome to that, if there were any, uh, updates from that. So, uh, I can, if there's a way that I can get your information or if you can use the, uh, the chat box there to provide your name and phone number or email address, or if you just want to reach out, if you don't want to put that out there publicly, I understand that as well. But if you'll just reach out to staff, we'll be glad to get some, uh, information, uh, some updated information for you.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to put it out there publicly because I know there's a lot of people interesting on what's going on. And especially they just told us today that between, behind the townhouses and the new development, there's gonna be a ditch, which, and they're gonna be eight feet lower than us today. There were some of the, the guys working were talking to other residents. And the thought of an eight, uh, ditch and, you know, water accumulating there was kind of alarming. So yeah, I'll put my address in and I'm sure there's a lot of people interested in it. So I have no problem with it being public. Thank you very much.
You'll just type your information there. Uh, we'll have a staff member get back to you.
Sure.
All right. One last call. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, on the consent agenda. If you could, uh, state your name and then the motion.
It's Troy motion to approve.
Mr. Russo seconded. Um, I'm gonna go down the list. Councilman Ron.
Approve.
Councilman John.
Uh.
Councilman Rodney.
Approve.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Approve.
Councilman Troy.
Approve.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Approve.
Motion carries. We're gonna move to the town manager's monthly report like you had taught enough today.
All right, I'm gonna make this really brief. Um, I wanted to, uh, get some feedback from council on, uh, one item that's kind of come to our attention, uh, here in the last couple of weeks and with the approval of, uh, some of the new positions in the budget. Uh, and I've mentioned this to council previously, but we need official action or a motion to proceed. Uh, so there's an opportunity for the town to, uh, to apply for what's referred to as a safer grant. Uh, safer, safer grants or federal grants that are offered for public safety, uh, expenses when you add, uh, personnel especially. So with the inclusion of three new firefighters proposed on, uh, the FY twenty-one budget, we would like to get approval from the council to move forward to apply for a safer grant to help offset some of the costs associated with those new personnel. Uh, so the safer grant specifically that we're looking to apply for, uh, covers seventy-five percent of the salaries associated with those new positions for the first two years and thirty-five percent of the salaries for the third year. Uh, so we are, uh, right now, um, of course, it's just a motion to, uh, to submit an application and that you support the town's intent to do so. Uh, of course, we'll come back, um, if we are awarded that application or awarded that grant, uh, and let you guys know of, uh, additional actions in the future. But would like to just get a motion of support from council to approve us applying for that application.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Say your name in the, in the motions so we get that written. Councilman Russo.
Councilman Selberg second.
Thank you. And we're gonna go down the list again. Um, any more discussion members before we get a vote? Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries.
All right, that's all that I have at this time.
All right, um, just real quick, we are gonna have a sustainability committee meeting on Wednesday. It will be via Zoom. And for those council members that are on this call, I'm, you're welcome always to join us. And for those that aren't, I'm happy to, I'll post it on my page and you're welcome to join us. We are looking for some more members for the committee. We did slow down a little bit. Our first, um, project would be geared towards sustainable businesses. And we know that our businesses are not having a great time right now. So we don't want to put anything else on top of them as they try to get out of what they're in. In fact, we'll probably focus not this group, but from the town perspective to figure out what we could do to benefit our, our businesses as they start to come out of, um, the phases that are ahead of us. So with that, I will go to council for any comments they may have. And if you can, uh, either flash or just go ahead and speak. Go.
Um, Haynes, quick question. I, I got a phone call just before we started tonight. A gentleman called over off of Caldwell Park Drive, said that you guys put up no parking signs over there not too long ago to prevent some of these semis parking over there. The question is, is, so they avoided the, the no parking signs, but they've moved up to Millbrook and they're parking at Millbrook. Can those signs be expand, expanded to Millbrook?
I will, uh, look into it and get back to you on that. Any no parking sign actually has to be approved by the town council when you designate those areas of the town. So I'll have staff look into, uh, that and where we're, where those issues are created. Um, and any adjustment that needs to be made will be, will be brought back to you in June.
Who, who's a good contact to point him towards?
Rob Donham, our public works director. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
The guy with the members. All right. And here and none, we will, uh, move to old business, towns' expired stay-home order.
And, uh, one thing I want to clarify before I get into the process of, uh, loading up a PowerPoint presentation here. Um, I, I know that there's been some concern and, uh, potentially some confusion on this agenda item. And I would just wanted to apologize for that. That certainly wasn't the intent of that. Uh, this particular agenda item was, uh, was requested and discussed at our, our last budget workshop of the town council. Uh, and at that last budget workshop, the expiration of the, uh, counties, Cabarrus County stay-at-home order had just ended and lapsed. And so, um, there was a desire for us as a community to continue to pay attention to, uh, what's happening with COVID-19, um, and what are the impacts here to us locally. Um, obviously, um, when the Cabarrus County order expired, we fell back on, uh, to the guidance of the state order. And so, uh, I want to make it very clear because we've gotten a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails, uh, from folks who are asking us to be less restrictive than what the county, or excuse me, what the state's stay-at-home order outlines. And I just want to make it, uh, pretty clear. I think most people know that we just do not have that authority to be less restrictive than the state's order. The only, uh, authority and opportunity we have is to consider more restrictive. Uh, if that's the direction that we go in, not saying that it is, we just wanted to put it out there for discussion to say locally, here's what's happening in Harrisburg and Cabarrus County, uh, related to COVID-19. Uh, and use that information and that data to drive it, uh, any decisions that wouldn't be necessary here at the local level. So, um, I want to first start out by saying I am by no means a, uh, expert when it comes to COVID-19 or anything in the health field. Um, I have a PowerPoint presentation, uh, that I'm getting ready to go through. This PowerPoint presentation was not prepared by the town of Harrisburg or the town of Harrisburg staff. This information comes directly from the Cabarrus Health Alliance, uh, our local, uh, health authority, uh, and who we rely on to provide us this information. So, um, I am going to, to go through this information, uh, in an unbiased form in terms of, I, I'm not going to attempt to opine on, uh, what the data says or does not say, uh, but simply to provide it as a resource to our town council as, uh, they, uh, go forth with their efforts to ensure that the safety of the community is, uh, at the forefront of their thought process. Um, but also want to get this out to the public. I think that, uh, it's important to share local information, uh, that we have, that we're able to provide, uh, to the public to, to give them insight, to help them, uh, you know, understand what's going on here locally. So, uh, put that disclaimer out there just to say that this isn't a reflection of any, uh, opinion of the town. Um, it is going to be, uh, specifically data-driven, uh, and discussions are related to data only. So again, this information is from the Cabarrus Health Alliance. Um, and this information is, uh, reflective of either today or yesterday. So we're trying to get the most, uh, up-to-date, uh, information that we can. You can see the total confirmed cases in Cabarrus County is three hundred and fifty-three. Um, that's a rise from over the weekend and that rise, uh, is mostly related to continued efforts and testing sites. So as the county rolls out additional testing sites and increases the number of, uh, folks that they test, um, it is understood that a byproduct of that is, uh, the increase in total confirmed cases. Uh, so deaths remain at seventeen, hospitalized. Um, so that is current, not cumulative. So locally here, there are seven hospitalized, uh, individuals here in Cabarrus County. Uh, that doesn't mean that those seven are Cabarrus County residents. It just means that they, uh, happen to be hospitalized here locally with us. Um, there are Cabarrus County residents that are hospitalized in other counties, uh, even in other states. Uh, but when it comes to understanding, uh, the stress that you would put, you know, uh, consider on a hospital or on our emergency entities, um, we want to pay attention to what we have going on here locally. So, um, we currently have, uh, seven hospitalized and that is a decrease, um, day over day from, uh, numbers that we were seeing previously. So out of those three hundred and fifty-three cases, two hundred and thirty-five of them are recovered. We have one hundred and one active. Uh, of those active cases, uh, only fifty-seven of them are not related to long-term care facilities. Uh, and currently the, uh, county has a emergency shelter established. And right now there is one individual, uh, occupied at that shelter. So very similar to the state, uh, when they talk about, and Governor Cooper talks about his, uh, metrics that he's following as, uh, he's paying attention to the phase one, phase two, and phase three reopenings of North Carolina. Uh, locally here in Cabarrus County, uh, the Cabarrus Health Alliance is paying attention to very similar metrics. So, uh, I will outline these seven, but, uh, if any of you guys are familiar with it, you're probably, uh, very understanding of, uh, of these particular mess, metrics. So the first is COVID-like syndromatic cases, um, and that there's a desire to see the downward trajectory of those cases, um, at the state level. Uh, two, there's lab confirmed cases. So what are we seeing here locally? Uh, and that there's a, a desire to see a downward trajectory of those confirmed cases over a fourteen-day period. Uh, metric three is positive tests. So there's a desire to see a downward trajectory in the number, or excuse me, the percentage of positive cases. Uh, the established goal is that, uh, the, uh, percentage of positive cases remain less than ten percent. Item four is hospitalizations and the desire to see a downward trend of patients hospitalized over a fourteen-day period. Metric five is testing. Uh, Cabarrus County here locally has a desire to increase the daily testing uh, to around a hundred to a hundred and twenty tests a day. Metric six is contract tasting, uh, tracing, excuse me, uh, where the, uh, C H A has the sufficient staff to conduct contact tracing, uh, for our county. And then item seven is to ensure that our, uh, public safety and emergency services have roughly a thirty-day supply of P P E in stock. So COVID-like syndromatic cases over fourteen days. So we'll run through each of those seven metrics and what it looks like here locally. So we'll run through each of those seven metrics and what it looks like here locally for us in Cabarrus County. So the percent of visits to the emergency department for COVID like illnesses had been on a steady decline for the past three weeks. But this past week has actually seen a slight uptick. So you can follow the graph there or the chart. We are in region seven. Region seven is towards the bottom of that grouping of lines. And you can kind of follow that and see as it gradually rose and there's been sort of three minor peaks. And since roughly the end of March, there had been a steady decline in that number. But as mentioned, there is just a marginally slight uptick over the last week in the percent of visits to the emergency department. Lab confirmed cases over 14 days. So this graph shows both the cumulative cases that you can see with the orange line. So as you would expect, that number or that line will continue to go up as new cases are added. The desire from the health community is to see that that line not peak in a dramatic format and really more kind of a soft flattening approach to how that line moves. And then number of new cases. So you can see week over week dating back to early March, the number of new cases that were added per week. And they want to see that steadily decline over a 14 day period. When you talk about positive tests as a percentage of total tests over 14 days. Again, the desired goal is to have that under 10%. And you can see outside of a window of time in early April that we have been successful in remaining under 10% of positive tests. And Cabarrus residents again hospitalized again, as of May 11th, there are seven. At the peak for us in Cabarrus County, there were 20 residents hospitalized. So again, a downward trend from that data point. From a testing perspective, so the ability of our county and our health departments to provide and increase our testing capacity to that 100 to 120 tests per day mark. So again, the the primary test organizations in Cabarrus County are Atrium Cabarrus, Nevada Health, the Cabarrus Health Alliance and CRC Health and Health Center. So you'll notice in the table there that over the last couple of weeks, or excuse me, over the last week, the county has been able to achieve that 100 to 120 tests per day metric that they were looking to accomplish. And they expect that due to the position that themselves and the organizations are in, that they'll be able to maintain that. So contact tracing. So CHA is partnering with Community Care of North Carolina for contact tracers to be embedded at CHA. So they believe they have successfully put in place the the programs or the initiatives to be able to achieve the contact tracing that they desire. From a PPE perspective and having 30 days of stock of those items, you can see a rundown here of this is county wide. So different organizations are going to maybe have different statuses associated with these. But these are a collective county wide understanding of PPE available. So you can see that there are a couple of marks where a couple of items that they do not have an adequate 30 day supply of at this point. They're obviously working on those, working with state and federal agencies, private agencies to ensure that those things meet that 30 day supply. And you know, there's a lot of positive information coming out about about the availability of those. But right now, today, they do not have those adequate PPE for that 30 day period. So for us here in Harrisburg, you can see there in the graph below, there's been 31 cases, positive cases here in Harrisburg. A big outbreak that we had for us was at our Elm Croft of Harrisburg facility, which is a congregated living facility here in town. At that facility, there were eight staff members that were diagnosed, but not all of those staff members were Cabarrus County or Harrisburg residents. There were 15 residents that did have cases there at Elm Croft. And unfortunately, one of those involved a death. So contrary, we want to make just one clarification here is that you see the number of cases from Elm Croft that doesn't necessarily correlate directly to the number of cases here in Harrisburg. Because again, not all of the cases at Elm Croft were related to Harrisburg residents or Cabarrus County residents. So when you look at a sort of a checklist of those seven metrics that the county and the state are following, you can see that the data is provide, the data that CHA has provided to us shows that they are currently going in the right direction or have achieved the metric that they wanted to see for five of the seven identifying factors. So the lab confirmed cases over 14 days is a number that unfortunately had a downward tick this past week. And then of course, the availability of the PPE. So that's not necessarily an red X, but it's certainly something that they are working towards fulfilling those gaps that they have in that equipment. So that is directly the information from the Cabarrus Health Alliance. Again, I don't purport to be any sort of health professional, just was wanting to share this information. This is information that has not really been discussed too much publicly, but felt it was important for us to consider if there was any desire to have conversations about our local state of emergency declaration that we still have in place here in Harrisburg. But also with the understanding that we are following the state's guidelines at the moment and are limited to the the actions and restrictions that they have in place.
Any questions from council?
Haynes, this is Ian, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So presumably, the county has the same restrictions and that they can't lessen any restrictions dictated by the state. If if the state is divided into regions that, you know, one through seven, is there any indication from state officials that they may consider restrictions on those regions? Or is that just helpful in dividing data?
Yeah, at this point, I believe it's just helpful in dividing data. I am not aware of any conversations related to that at the state level, but I certainly don't want to speak to them. They've kept their information pretty close to the vest throughout this process. So we can attempt to find out, but I would assume that it's just a point of data collection.
Thank you.
Haynes, Rick Russo, I just think we should follow the governor's restrictions. I don't think we need to make it any stricter. I just think with all the data you just showed us that he's going to make the right decision at the right time. So I just think that as a town, we should probably follow his guidelines.
Ron Smith here. I agree with Councilman Russo. You know, North Carolina is what appears to be is on those probably more slower tracks to come out of this as opposed to say, South Carolina, Georgia, Virginia, maybe a little bit slower as well. But I think the governor's done enough there. I mean, I don't see us stepping more into people's lives being that we are a bedroom community of Charlotte. We're going to have folks, whether we put it in or not, folks are going to have to go back to work at some point. And if we still have this in place, then it creates even more challenges. So I'm not in favor of this stuff.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, John Booth. And just to kind of echo what everybody else has said, at this point, I would not be in favor of anything more stringent.
Haynes, I did have a question. The latest email I saw from the phase one reopening that it was going to be up to local jurisdiction regarding parks. Is that a discussion we need to have?
Yeah, but I mean, potentially if there's any, anything that you would like to see related to our parks specifically. So right now, we are following the the guidelines of the state. So our playgrounds continue to be closed, but our recreational fields remain open. Our fields have remained open throughout the entire process. But there have been some limitations on things like tennis courts. We don't have any basketball courts here locally. But yes, if there's a specific desire that council wishes to have related to those amenities or those facilities, we do have the ability to implement those on our own, but we have deferred back to the state at this point.
Okay, well, I agree with everybody that we should continue to defer to the state until we have at least better data.
Yep, it is my intent to continue to provide this data to the council to the best of my abilities. And we'll keep the public updated as well at the meeting so long as this is a continues to be an issue for our community.
Any other questions or comments? All right, here and done, we're going to move to July 4th celebration event.
All right, Mayor and Council, I'll just kind of take this one over. I know Daniel is available for a conversation or questions if you guys have any. This again was something that was discussed at the last budget workshop in terms of our July 4th festivities. So as everyone knows, the July 4th holiday is a big celebration here in the town of Harrisburg as we hold a two day festival with amusements and concerts and two days of fireworks. And then on July, the morning of July 4th, we have one of the largest July 4th parades in the region. So obviously, the impacts of COVID-19, the state's order related to restrictions of mass gatherings and things like that have potentially put a hindrance on our ability to hold the July 4th event. So previously, we've discussed with council, the the timing of the state's stay at home order. If you follow the the timing that Governor Cooper has outlined, in a best case scenario, we would not reach the end of phase three until sometime in late June, early July. And for us, from a planning perspective and from a financial perspective, we have to commit to our program and festivities now way before we get the opportunity to see where we would be at from a stay at home order perspective. So there is a risk for us to continue to move forward with our event from a financial perspective that, you know, we would get to a point where the state's order would not allow us to have the event, even if we wanted to. And so with that risk and with that timeline that's been outlined by Governor Cooper, staff's recommendation at this point is for us to cancel the scheduled festivities with the July 4th event. That's both the parade, the festival and all of the, all of the events that occur with those. And that's a, it's a heavy decision to make and a tough decision to make. But we just feel like it's too risky from a financial perspective to move forward with it where we will have contributed funds that we would not be able to recoup back with deposits and expenses associated with preparing for that. And then we would not be able to to move forward and hold the event. And so with that being said, we've got several recommendations for how we can utilize those funds and how we can have a celebratory July 4th. So looking at things that do not require mass congregation or gatherings, virtual events, our staff and our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Arts and Heritage Committee have come up with some great, you know, kind of clever and unique ideas that we can utilize to make sure July 4th does not pass without celebration. But at the same time, it's unfortunate for us that our July 4th event this year was going to be sort of the grand reopening of Harrisburg Park and all of the new amenities that we have associated with that facility. And so we want to still be able to celebrate that. We just don't know when we're going to get to do that. But staff would recommend that we look towards scheduling a grand reopening facility, event sometime in late August or early September, that we can bring the community together and engage them and really, you know, use it as a reopening of Harrisburg Park, but also as a reopening of Harrisburg in general and sort of a return to a more normal nor more, a more normal life than what we've experienced under the COVID-19 restrictions. So a lot of details, a lot of things that can be played out from from that standpoint. But staff does need directive from council on the actual July 4th events so that we can prepare accordingly as to whether or not to move forward with those or not. I'll open it up for a discussion real quick on the actual July 4th event and whether or not there's any conversations against canceling the event that staff has recommended.
Hey, this is Councilman Selberg. What I would like to do is I would like to make sure that we include businesses in any celebration that we do. As we come out of this, they need more help than than any of us right now. And we would like to include them in any celebration that we have moving forward. So regardless on what we decide, let's think about our businesses as we do that.
Yes, sir, good idea.
Haynes, Rick Russo, I think we should do move it into September and just make a grand opening for the park and do everything we would do for the Fourth of July with the parade, the games. I think it would be a lot safer for our citizens and we would definitely be able to plan for it. And we definitely would know where the COVID-19 is by then. So like Labor Day, something like that, just do a Labor Day, make it the Fourth of July.
Any objection to canceling the July 4th festivities?
No objections, but I have one question. So are we still looking at the second weekend in September as opposed to Labor Day weekend, right?
Yeah, I would recommend avoiding Labor Day for a couple of reasons. First of all, if if we are out of sort of the phase three, I can imagine it's going to be a time where a lot of travel will take place for residents. But at the same time, in looking at our vendors that we use for our fireworks and our amusement rides and things like that, those vendors are committed on Labor Day. And so we want to try to take advantage of the deposits and the investments that we've made in July 4th and just reallocate those to a future event. And we wouldn't be able to do so as easily on Labor Day. So I would recommend a late August or early September, you know, festival day. And we don't have to decide the date tonight with something that we can discuss and 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 staff can get some proposals for you guys to consider. We more or less need direction tonight on the the Fourth of July celebration and make it formally known that the event will be canceled. But again, we can come up with some creative ideas. There's been some virtual ideas thrown out, some really patriotic themes, some get the community involved via social media and other platforms to to again, try to make sure that the the holiday isn't lost without a celebration.
I would be in support of moving that to another date, Haynes.
So do you want to motion on that? So let's get a motion on moving the Fourth of July event to a to be determined date as we move forward.
Motion on the floor, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor, Rick Russo. Second about John Booth. Any more discussion? I'll go down the list, Councilman Ron.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
If you don't mind.
Yep.
So does this mean we're basically canceling all contracts, including fireworks?
No, so as we had discussed previously, we do have some deposits on things like the fireworks and the amusement rides that we've already placed with those vendors. And what we will do is we will work with those vendors to ensure that those deposits are used at that future event. So our conversations with them early on have been positive that they will agree to allow us to hold those deposits and apply it to a future event as long as the event happened in the 2020 calendar year. So if we move to late August, early September, then we'll be able to accomplish that. And we're basically just reutilizing the funds that we had previously allocated for July 4th to this new event. The idea is not to lose any deposits that we have made.
Okay. I mean, I know that all of council on this call knows that once again, July 4th is a special day for me and I I hate to, I hate to reschedule something like that. I understand the the impacts and certainly we can't have gatherings and the the governor's timeline just doesn't work out. But I'd like council to consider potentially at least reserving, you know, half of the fireworks fee to be used. Because it's it's usually a Because it's, it's usually a two day item. So we usually do fireworks two days if I'm not mistaken. And if we could possibly use them on the fourth in some capacity, I think that makes some sense. As you'll know. You know, when, when we say. The, the bombs bursting in air, but our flag was still there. I think that would be a powerful message.
Yes, staff is open to any direction of the council. If we wanted to just have a fireworks show on the fourth. You know, that's certainly an option for us to consider. We talked about it at the budget workshop, the only challenger, I guess, worry that staff would have would be whether or not we were encouraging mass gatherings for folks to gather in parking lots or nearby. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to shoot off the, the large stuff like a New York City or something does where it can be seen from, you know, just not anywhere in the city. Ours are limited in that aspect of, of visibility. So maybe we can push out a lot of instructions and recommendations to the public to sort of limit that. But that would be our only worry is that we would be encouraging a violation of the state's stay at home order by those mass gatherings. But otherwise it's a great idea.
I'd like to know what other council thinks and maybe Hanes, if you could elaborate a little bit on if, if we didn't meet the, or let's say the state didn't get to a point where we were allowing mass gatherings. Would the company allow us to say, just move that? Move that to the August for the one day instead of the two day. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Council?
No. Rick, would you be willing to amend the motion? Is that as a sort of contingency plan?
Yes, I, I would be, Ian, but like Hane says, how, how's everybody going to see the fireworks? Where are they going to park at? I mean, you know, I was at the park today and there's, it's making a lot of progress and I don't want to diss anybody like saying it's not going to be done. I don't know. I mean, it just would have to probably wait till June to see where we're at with the, with the, with the governor. But and then what are you going to do? One, one night on the fourth and then only one night when we do have the celebration? I don't know. I'm just, you know. I get it, it's important to you, but I'm looking out for the, the citizens and how are we going to see them? Where, if we go all up around there and hang out, if people come from all over, if they know we're having fireworks, I mean, I, what are you going to, you know, what's going to happen?
Well, all I'm saying is that we, we don't know yet. So we, we know we're close to being up against a deadline, but we don't know. So I don't want to make the, the decision to just completely, you know, cancel everything. And not leave something in place that could potentially be an option for us, should we know more, like you said, in a month.
Well, you know, the, the other side of that though is, is as Rick said. If we find ourselves as being one of the few in the area that were to have something, now we're creating even more of a challenge trying to mitigate. A bigger issue and it's not just our resident, but it's other residents from outside the area. You know.
Why don't we do this? Cause I think it's, it's time, right? So Ian, we don't know what's going to happen the next 30, 60 days and it's still. We could still potentially pull fireworks off if, if warranted and just leave it as a kind of open ended and we'll have this discussion next month to see if anything has changed from, from the state perspective. Before we throw it completely out and we still aren't, aren't going to, we can still move it into September or August anyway. So leave it open.
Is, is our vendor pushing us on the firework piece, Hanes?
Well, I was just about to say, obviously this is going to be totally reliant on the vendor's availability and willingness to do it on the fourth. So if we go with the amended motion that the mayor just outlined where we just look to see as, as if we can buy some time to understand where we're at. We'll work with the vendor to understand what is that timeline? When, when is their drop dead deadline that they need to know and have financial commitment on us moving forward with the show on July 4th? And we'll bring that date back to you guys and it likely will be before the June council meeting. But we'll bring that date back for you and that may be the decision making for us on, on whether or not that happens.
Would that require a special meeting?
It was a decision that I think that if we get clarity from council tonight, motion and you give us the authority to make that decision on our own. I don't think we would have to have a special meeting. We can make that decision with the data and your direction from staff without doing it in an official capacity.
Ian, let me, let me tell you, um. I've been going to 40s live over 15 years. I love it too. It's special to me. I get it. I'm just looking out for the citizens, everybody else in the town. So I mean, I'm not trying to diss it at all. I'm with you a hundred percent. I, my whole family, you know, participates in the 4th of July and we love it. I just don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. That's all, that's the only reason I said what I said.
And I'm still where I was the other day, Ian, where, you know, there, there's been a lot canceled this year. There's been a lot of things that folks have missed that were very important. And you know, I, I just think we're too close up against the governor's window to try to plan in accordance with it and hope for the best. I mean, I would just rather say let's just do it.
Counsel, if I may, this is Daniel, just in terms of your decision you're making. As far as the vendor goes, the deposit has been made and that commitment is for July 4th. So whether we let him know now or we'll, in June, it won't change his already committed date. And if we don't do July 4th launch, they will retain that deposit to be utilized for the future fireworks shoot. I just want to throw that out there to release that complication on making a decision.
So there's no penalty?
Correct. The, the deposit is already paid. So that's, that's what's committed us to July 4th already. So if we reschedule, that will just be carried forward to a reshoot later in the year. And they've already given us that commitment because they understand the situation we're in.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was what they could do. They, they can make more money shooting them somewhere else if they wanted to on the 4th of, yes, in September. But like I said, I'm just worried about the citizens would rather. I, I don't, I don't, you know.
So, so Rick, it sounds like.
Fire department and the police department. I mean, you're going to get them then and then now and pay the police department again. So I mean, it's, it's a one day, it's a 4th of July. Celebrate in my house. I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
Oh, yeah. So Rick, it sounds like we have, we have no risk in letting it sort of float. Are you okay with that amended motion?
Is everyone okay with amending the motion? I'm not even sure who made it at this point. Who made the motion?
It, it was Rick's motion.
Okay, Rick, are you okay with just leaving it open and on determining what we do for 4th of July and, and come up with a, a firm decision on at least that part by June?
I'm, I'm okay with it, but I, the only thing I would want to do on the 4th of July would be fireworks and that's it.
Okay, and that's, and that's all he's suggesting right now.
That's it.
So we're, we're going to stop the rest of the.
I'm telling you right now, it's going to cause it to happen.
Well, if you're not comfortable, I mean, we go back to where we started and the motion was to move the 4th of July to September at staff's recommendation, whether it's forward or backwards of the Labor Day weekend.
And that's what I'm at. I'm not comfortable.
Who, who made the second? Troy, you did?
I thought it was Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sorry. Trying to keep up. All right. So are we going to go back to the original motion of just deferring, moving the whole 4th of July to September timeframe?
Yes.
Everybody good with that? All right. So I have a motion on the floor and it's properly second. I'm going to go down the list. Councilman Ron.
Hi.
Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
No.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Thank you. All right, we're moving to the next new business item contract with Kimley Horn Associates for phase one of American Disabilities Act.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Rob Dunham, our Public Works Director.
All right, let's make sure I get the screen share right. So are you able to see the presentation that we have here?
Yep, we're good.
Great. So I have the next three items on the agenda. So I'll, I'll run through them. You guys can stop me if you have any questions or I'll just save them to the end. But the first item here is the ADA infrastructure plan. If you guys recall, about a year and a half ago, we were instructed by the state of North Carolina that we had to be in compliance with the state's ADA laws in order to receive federal or state funding. So after some conversations back and forth to see what that looked like. What we were really deficient in and, and the Department of Transportation was as well was having a infrastructure plan. So a, a log of all of our facilities and whether they were or were not ADA compliant. So last year it was funded to get this infrastructure plan in place. So in the past year, we went through and did a request for qualifications and then analysis of consultants. Took an internal catalog of how many miles of what we had sidewalk, facility related, roadway related. And came to this point tonight where we're recommending a contract with Kimley and Horn, who was selective consultant. They've done quite a bit of transportation, infrastructure related projects for us already. So as far as a, as far as a value was considered, a lot of this data was already in their system. So we wouldn't be duplicating that cost. The total cost of the evaluation is a hundred thousand dollars. This project covers evaluation identification of all the infrastructure that would be relevant to our mandate. At the end of this, we would end up with a, a report and a database and a GIS database file that we can implement into our GIS system. It doesn't address the rest of the ADA law, which includes policies or interior walkways, bathrooms, things like that for our employees. That would be addressed and updated in the future as needed, but were considered in compliance and that's handled through administration, A R, H R right now. You can see here on the first slide, I have the breakdown of those costs as far as task one through four, which goes through the project management of it. The cost for the actual inventory, the reviews and sort of breaks it down between sidewalks, intersections, driveways. And then the actual plan drafting and, and meetings. The next slide here, the facilities review, this kind of breaks down, I guess, in a, I've taken this out of the contract, but it breaks it down in a numerical way to see what we're actually getting. So as far as the, you know, facilities that we're going to look at. We're going to look at Town Hall, which is kind of our, one facility that's open to the public on a reoccurring basis. So we'll do an evaluation of Town Hall, all the common spaces, common use spaces. Anywhere the public would have access to without being escorted around or brought in by an employee. And then building sidewalks, all onsite sidewalks for all buildings. So that's not just Town Hall, but everything that we have. So anywhere around the fire stations, around public works, we would take a look at all the ramps, any trip hazards. As well as 21 miles of sidewalk that we have here in town that we maintain. So that will all be evaluated as part of this. And then unsignaled intersections and driveways. We have approximately 168 intersections and about 525 curb ramps related to those intersections that we'll be taking a look at, evaluated and given a recommendation. At the end of this, again, we'll have a report that says, you know, this curb ramp is deficient, why it's deficient, what a recommended. Resolution would be to that. And then we would take that and develop. A capital improvement plan in future out years allocating whatever the council has in the budget for that. And we would kind of put it into a phased approach to get everything a hundred percent ADA compliant. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I got one. Rob, is it a hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about?
Yeah, tonight's contract is a hundred thousand dollars. And that goes towards, you can see there, task one through four of getting us the, the data that we need to build the capital improvement plan.
And how long is it going to take for them to get this done?
Um, we're, we have like a three to six month timeframe, but. Our kind of drop dead is the fall of this year to have this done. That way we can implement this through our budget process next year.
Even through COVID-19, they'll still be able to get it done by September?
Yep.
Rob Rodsmith, I have a question.
Yep.
So I, I, I'm having a fuzzy memory and Hanes may need to weigh in. I always think in there was a contractor that we used on veterans that backed away, kind of left us in a mess. Was that the same vendor, Kimley?
Veterans. No, not, not that I know. Was I here at that time?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I don't think it was, it was tied to the contractor working on the Veterans Park stuff, right? And they caused, because of the way they either estimated or.
Yeah.
Stuart, that was Stuart. Different contract.
Yep.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we generally try not to hire anybody we fired in the past, but.
I just couldn't remember.
It's been, been pretty reputable for us in my time here.
Any other questions from council? If hearing none, then I'll entertain.
Rob. Go ahead. Sorry, Ian here. The amount for a hundred thousand dollars just seems excessive to me. For the amount of facilities we have, given that. At least a few of them are fairly new. I've actually done quite a few of these assessments at my business, including all of Mecklenburg County's libraries. For their ADA assessments and I understand that, that buildings themselves are slightly intensive. There's a few things you look for, restrooms and water fountains and things like that. And sidewalks may seem like a, like a big issue, but on closer inspection, generally all you get is kind of sidewalk upheaval. And if it's over a half an inch, you just shave it down. So it seems like, you know, we could do that internally. Same thing with curb cuts and ramps and truncated domes and things like that. So when I look at this dollar figure, I see the buildings as the, as the major amount and a hundred thousand dollars just for an assess, assessment seems excessive. In addition to that, are they providing us with cost estimates for the. Corrections as part of their report? And also have we identified, or are we asking them to identify items that could potentially require a permit or that we could use staff to make the corrections?
So I heard three, three questions there or one statement, two questions, but the first one was the, the cost. If you look at the, the task and we, we negotiated this for, for months with these guys and shaved, you know, everything we could. So from my standpoint, you know, we, we've done, you know, our due diligence on, on cost. And if we could get it lower, I certainly would. But about 64,000 of that hundred is just sidewalk and intersection and driveway inspections. And it's, it's just man, it's a man hour cost. They just physically have to send crews out and take measurements on all of that and 21 miles of sidewalk. And then I think if you look. You know, 168 intersections with 525 curb ramps. It, it's just busy work. I agree. I don't think it's, it's highly technical, but it's just, it's a lot of. Man hours for guys with the correct equipment to go out and do that. I agree with you. I think the facilities are, are a little bit lower cost. And I think if you look at the facility, facility inventory, you know, we. are, are a little bit lower cost. And I think if you look at the facility, facility inventory, you know, we've got about 3,000 to do Town Hall. And then I'm sure, you know, some cost trap wrapped up in the task three transition plan to put that in there. So, you know, from a cost that was about, I think it was as low as we could get it with, with what we had budgeted. The, we will have cost estimates for what we do identify. So that is part of the transition plan. And I think that's why that's 14,700, not more like 4,000. But we do have cost estimates and recommendations based on that. And I do anticipate a lot of that work we can do in-house with some of our, with our work crews, as long as we have the, the equipment necessary. But like you said, the milling of, you know, something that's maybe sidewalks pushed up three quarter inch and we can, we can mill that down. Those are, those are things we do now. So I think we could get out and address a lot of this with in-house crews. And then the bigger things like curb ramps, those would probably be bid out.
Hey, Rob, this is Diamond. I have a question.
Okay.
Going forward, for any type of new construction, will you use these recommendations for those new construction items?
We, we use those, we use those now. So all of our new projects that go in, we inspect them when they go in for ADA compliance. So, you know, generally it like, I would say, you know, at least for a year or two, after acceptance, we can pretty much guarantee those things are good. The, the problem comes if there's a tree root or something around a sidewalk that pushes it up or you get a crack or a void. And, and something, you know, a valve pushes up, something like that. But for the most part, most of our new stuff should come back pretty clean, but we don't, our problem is we don't have any proof that those are actually in compliance unless we have any valuation done. And that, that was part of the mandate here was, you know, we were pretty comfortable that a lot of our new developments say Bloom North. You know, recently accepted, we go through and do an evaluation. I don't expect, you know, much to come out of that. But in order for the town to be in compliance and say, hey, look, we've got this, this data and we've got this program of replacement. We needed to have this.
Rob, Councilman Selberg here. I don't know if it's more of a statement than it is a, a question, but what this is going to allow is going to allow us to have a baseline data point that we currently do not have. Is that correct?
Correct.
So this can be used for years and years to come?
It, it can. And I would anticipate, like I said, but part of the, part of the deliverable for this is GIS data shaped files that we can, we can put into our system. And with our staff, we can then go out annually, let's say, and inspect 25% of it or 10% of it, or whatever the, you know, whatever staffing allows or whatever the requirements are. But once we have that kind of base data point, it's something that you can maintain moving forward.
Thank you.
Rob, I thought their contract stated that they were going to use our existing GIS. Can we go back to that slide?
We have some, we go back to. This the one you're, you're talking about?
Yeah, 2.2 last sentence. All field data will be compatible with the client's existing GIS.
Right.
Just saying, okay, so they're going to use some to pull in some of that information.
Well, yeah, and that, we have some data that we'll give them, but that statement's more to make sure that the data they give us is compatible with whatever format we want it in. So I, I don't, I don't want them giving us, you know, ESRI files if I need it in a shape file or vice versa, something like that.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
Rob, that's why I was asking the question. I just thought $100,000 is a lot of money. I'm not a fan of Kimmy Horn. I've been listening to them for years, but, and I'm not a study guy, but since it's ADA, I guess I'll support it, but definitely not a fan of the hundred grand. I'm going to tell you right now.
Yeah, I don't think any of us are. And I think that's why we're doing it under mandate and not as a
Exactly.
as an admin initiative.
It wasn't ADA, we had to do it. I would, I would not be for it. I'm just going to tell you that right now.
Well, we know.
Sir Rod, this is Rodney. What data did they already have in their system that you're able to use? Because you said you chose Kimberly because of they had too much data already in their system.
Yeah, they've done a lot of work even prior to me being here on our transportation network. So you know, obviously they, they've done a lot of RTIA. So they've done traffic counts, they've done signal designs for both DOT and for the town. So they just have a lot of this mapping already done. So as far as pulling, you know, a map in and giving it to their field crews and saying, hey, go out and inspect this. That, that was kind of what we were leaning on, that they have a, want an inherent knowledge of our system from working here so long. And then some of these signal plans and some of the roadway plans that they've done over the years.
So what would the cost have been had they not had that data? Do we know?
I don't know exactly. I don't think it's significant, but I would say 10% of the, the project cost would be added to familiarizing yourself, doing site visits, pulling record plans, those types of things.
Rob, was this put out for bid or is this the only bidder we chose?
No, this, the, the way we have to award professional services is they're not allowed to be bid. So what we do is we do a request for qualifications and then we'll select the most qualified applicant. And then we have to enter into a, a negotiation phase. And you kind of heard Ian and I talking about that earlier. And then if you can't negotiate a contract, then you'll move on to your second selection.
Got it. All right. What are council's wishes?
Rob, is it your opinion that I'm, I'm still stuck on the sidewalk thing because it was 65% of the contract price? For other council members, ADA is actually federal law. But when you dig down to it, especially on sidewalks and, and public streets, you really only have two requirements you need to meet in which like Rob said, you can't have roots or, you know, sidewalk panels that are more than a half an inch high. And then ramps going through intersections with, which have truncated domes and things like this. And so I guess my main question is for 65% of the contract price, are you, are you saying that without this verification on a very small item, we could not show the state that we've complied with the order?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that's without having an inventory of our entire system, we're out of compliance with, with one of the phases of ADA. So this, this, you know, the, having every sidewalk catalogued, identified, having the mapping and then having an inventory that says what does and does not need fixed. We're out of compliance. And this, their, their analysis of the sidewalk is, is pretty much what you said. Just add side slope to that. So you, you can't have more than the 2% side slope. The trip hazards and then continuity are kind of the things they're looking for. And my understanding and speaking with them is they have a, a machine that they'll roll down every sidewalk and, and measure that. And you know, as it rolls over a bump, it can measure the, the actual tolerance, which was something that I was having a hard time wrapping my mind around what, whether you were going to get down on each one with a level and a tape and try to measure that or, or, or how that system went. Cause that obviously with 21 miles can get pretty significant if you get into some of these air older sidewalks that have a lot of cracks. So you know, that's the cost of it. And it's more than, than I'd like. I mean, for sure. And again, that's, if it wasn't a mandate, I, I don't think it's a, a great resource to have is, I, I think you, you can go complaint driven in some of your newer neighborhoods, but unfortunately we just wouldn't be in compliance with the, the state law on ADA, because there's, there's a federal ADA, which I think we're, we're, we're complying on, but the state has a more stringent standard on that as far as documentation.
Mayor, I motion to approve.
I motion on the floor by Councilman Troy.
Yeah, good.
Probably say by Councilman Russo. Any more discussion?
Quick question. Didn't we already allocate the money for this anyway? Yes. Okay.
Any other questions? I'm going to get out of the list. Councilman Ron.
Yeah.
Councilman John.
Uh.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Question carries. I guess, Rob, you're still up. Contract with NJR, NJR Group for Construction of System A.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is System A Phase Two Stormwater Construction Contract. This has kind of been a, a thorn in the side of the town for, for a long time. So we're really excited to, to move forward with this. This project, total cost of $877,055 is the construction cost. This is a stormwater upgrade project that includes Autumn Drive, Candy Stick, School Street and Woodside Drive. It will take the water from all those roads and get it to its confluence point. The, if, if those of you that were here prior to me and in the first couple of years, when we analyzed this, you'll know that the original estimate for this area to upgrade it to the 10-year storm was approximately $6 million. And multiple homes would need to be tore down to, to accomplish that. We obviously didn't think that was a great use of taxpayer dollars, considering all the stormwater issues that are going around town and obviously making the final design more impactful than the current flooding that that area experiences. So what we did was kind of scrapped that plan and redid it with the current design, which was developed in-house by the current engineering staff. And we also took out construction management. And we're doing both of those in-house. By doing both of those with our current staff, that was approximately $150,000 that we eliminated from consulting fees. And the final design was more of a best fit design that addressed all of the major issues out there. So if we had driveways that, that needed replaced because their pipes weren't, weren't done well, or we had standing water, we went it with enclosed storm drainage systems, things like that, to have a low impact design that took care of really, you know, 95% of the complaints that we have out there. The area to the right here is just kind of a crude sketch of the general area that we'll be doing the improvements on. You'll see Autumn Drive from the confluence right there on the very top of the screen. All the way down Autumn to parallel, we'll pick up the drainage from Candy Stick as well as School Avenue where there's a natural stream drainage that goes into backyards and floods the one property at the corner of Candy Stick and parallel significantly. The two sheets on the, on the left are the beginning and end of the project. It's just a, you know, a rough overview. It's what you can kind of see of our design plans out there, but we'll have one major storm collector in the street in Autumn. And then we will put inlets on each side of the street to collect those. So no more ditches. We just kind of have small swales there with yard inlets. It will pick up all this drainage and, and get it out of there ahead of the storm. This will take care of, you know, the, the major erosion problems that we have out there. A lot of the ditch issues where ditches stay flooded, where people constantly have running water. What it won't address are those 10-year plus storms. So when we have flash flooding, you know, you're still going to have some issues out there, but you won't have any property damage above and beyond what you have now. And this will get that water out sooner. And for most of the time, you're not going to see any water running. It's all going to be an enclosed system covering both sides of the street. Hope everybody can see all those little numbers. The, the thing to pay attention to is, is the bottom. We had seven bidders on this project. I'm sorry, six bidders on this project. And the bids vary widely from about 1.7 million at the high bid to the low bid of 918,000. You'll notice that's different from what we're awarding. After we took a look at the low bid here with NJR of 918,000, we identified some value engineering. We, we thought some of the costs for some of the items were significantly high. And we were right at our budget limit. Since we don't bid a contingency into these, we bid them and then add the contingency. So our engineering team went back to the drawing board after the 918 and eliminated some head walls and some insignificant items and just kind of reworked a few things to eliminate about 120,000 from that bid. So the, the final bid number ended up around 800,000. And then we added our 10% contingency to get you to the final contract number there. The contingency will be used to, you know, take care of any unknown things. When we get out there and start digging, we'll hit utilities. We always know those are issues that we have to relocate. If the, you know, because this is going in the roadway, if, if we start having some of that con or asphalt chip off, we may need to pave more than we've accounted for or replace some driveways that, that we didn't account for to get damaged during the, the construction. So the recommended motion is to approve the contract with NJR Group and that amount of $877,055 for the construction of System A Phase Two Stormwater Drainage Improvements Project and the related project ordinance amendment. Any questions?
What was the bid day, Rob?
Oh geez, I'd have to look back to get you the exact bid day, but it was, it was more than a month ago. So it was right before council meeting last week, but I can get you that exact bid day. I didn't have it in the presentation.
It should, it should be on the bid tab.
It opening the ninth, April 9.
So I'm not necessarily speaking in particular to this project, but I'll just let council know that I've been a few projects recently and one of them was similar to this and that. My cost estimate was 840,000. And on bid day, which was last Thursday, I had to open 11 bids, which I haven't seen a pile like that since 2008. And the low bid was $690,000. So roughly 20% reduction in costs. So for upcoming projects and maybe some that we have shelved, now is a good time to consider getting those going or potentially even rebidding them.
Yeah, good point. We, we were really happy with the amount of bidders. We, you know, you can see on some of our contracts, we'll get, we'll struggle to get three bidders. On this one, getting six was, we were excited about that. And again, by the spread you can see there, I, I think the low bidder ended up being, being pretty well. They were about 10% under the engineer's estimate.
All right. What are the wishes of council? Got a message on the floor by Councilman Smith. Second by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion? Let me go down the list. Councilman Ron.
Hi.
Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Question carries. To Cabarrus Woods contract.
Final item I have here for you is another construction contract. This is for Cabarrus Woods Sewer Rehab Phase Two. We did the exact same thing last year, but we split it into two construction. but we split it into two construction pieces. So we had a, a design sewer, sanitary sewer evaluation study that we had done in two thousand and eighteen, identified in the Cabarrus Woods neighborhood, everything that, that was failing. So varying degrees of failure, but we identified a condition study on the entire area to identify the inflows of rainwater, which we have to pay WASC to treat as if it were sewage. And to see where we would have any lines that were potentially breaking or were breaking that needed repair. So Phase One, last year, we identified the, the worst areas, which amounted to six hundred and twenty two thousand dollars worth of work. And we saved the remainder for this year. So this project this year, Phase Two is five hundred and thirty one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars sixty cents. And that combined with Phase One comes up with one million, one hundred and fifty four thousand dollars in upgrades, repairs, and maintenance that we're doing in Cabarrus Woods Sewer. Here's the map of Cabarrus Woods. It, it's oriented to the left to, so counter, counterclockwise ninety degrees north is to the left instead of straight up, but it fit better on the page this way. So the, all the red areas are the areas that were failing and in need of repair. So if you can see, almost the entire neighborhood when we did this study had, you know, areas that, that needed addressed. Manhole repair, lining, point replacement, complete line repair, varying degrees of, of things. But we, again, we started downstream and, and worked our way up trying to hit the worst ones last year, and we were finishing out this neighborhood this year. Here's the bid tab again for this one, which was bid a little bit sooner, a little bit more specialized work. But we only got three bids for this, this particular project. Again, the original bid came in just, you know, a touch high, and we did modify some of the contingency and point repair items on this in order to meet our allowable budget. You see Atlantic Coast Contractors was the low bid, five hundred and seventy seven thousand twelve dollars. The high bid was, you know, almost three times, between two to three times that, that amount. So once again, quite a, quite a difference in, in spread there, which is indicative of guys that need work versus the companies that do not need work. The recommended motion we have here for tonight is to award the bid to Atlantic Coast Contractors in the amount of five hundred and thirty one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents for the two thousand and twenty Cabarrus Woods Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project and authorize the contract in the same amount. Any questions?
Move for approval, Mayor.
A motion on the floor by Councilman Rick. Second by Councilwoman Diamond. Any more discussion? Let me get out of the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman Ron. That's all right. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Moving to Holcomb Woods Land Acceptance.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. We'll be moving through these as quick as I can here. So tonight's first item I've got is actually a little bit, little, on, on the history of that will be for the Holcomb Woods Development. This original development and the land that come about it actually predates my employment here. So this is kind of triggered on a little bit, but we are to the point where the land that was dedicated to the town, the twelve point six acres to be developed as a park, we have worked up the documents to accept that land as part of their original conditions. We, the, the town had negotiated them to dedicate part of their common or their public open space, the, the land in addition to the, the park development portion, which would have been the construction of two soccer fields ninety space parking lot as well, the entrance to the facility. One thing that I did change in this original MOU or this original conditions that we had with this development in land was that rather the developer constructing these fields themselves, there was concern of their ability to perform this as residential lot graders developing two professional fields. I had a little concern of that. So we were successful in negotiating a check for two hundred and forty thousand dollars that would be awarded to the town during closing during this land acceptance. So I want to put that part out there. So all in all, the, with the help with the town attorney, we have a MOU that's attached night's agenda that's in your packet that discloses the conditions as they are to date with all the amendments. We also have the resolution in your packet that work walks through the acceptance or the conveyance of the property. The contractor or TAC Holcomb LLC is still responsible for constructing the ninety space parking lot, which has been completed. And that has been verified by town staff and has been done according to our requirements as engineering requires. So the final thing after tonight's land acceptance from the council would be the closing date, which the attorney is working with Holcomb TAC's attorney to establish that. And that's the point when we would do the final doc, final land and deed transfer as well, receive the check for the two hundred and forty thousand. So in all the recommendation, his staff recommends acceptance of the Holcomb Woods land related improvements and the payment for the construction of athletic fields in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'll take any questions if there is any.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Rick.
I'll second it.
Probably second by Councilman John. Any more discussion? Going down the list. Councilman Ron.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Daniel, in the approval of this, is the twelve acres include the parking lot?
Yes, sir. That's the land of its entirety.
And, and the parking lot has been accepted by Rob and his people?
Yes, sir. Patrick, Jason Patrick is the inspector. He was on site while that work was being performed. And it is in compliance to my understanding.
Thank you.
I'll start back over. Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Bid award for Holcomb Park Fields.
All right, moving right along. This is in relation to the same land and the same park. So as part of the land acceptance, the part with the construction of the athletic fields and the awarding of the two hundred and forty thousand dollars by TAC Holcomb, we put out an informal bid for this project to be performed by a third party. The winning bid was with First Athletics. They specialize solely in athletic field construction. They met all the requirements that we put in the informal bid for, to construct a FIFA regulation soccer field plus irrigation. So this, this contractor would perform the final rough in, the final fine gradings, laser grading, irrigation installation, and sodding of the fields that would have them ready. And we would be playing on them this fall. So this was a part of that agreement with TAC Holcomb to take these work requirements off of them. So with that, staff recommends awarding this bid to First Athletic Field Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the construction of the two athletic fields at what would be Holcomb Park. And if there's any questions, I would entertain those now.
Yes, Daniel. This is Councilman Selberg again. There was some conversation numerous times about making those fields also compatible with cricket. What, was that taken into consideration in this bid?
Yes, sir. It actually was. I was very adamant with that developer and that, and not only with him, that we capped the existing storm drains that were once put in, and that has already been done. We've also worked those arrangements in with the bidder to construct that as one uniform two-field complex. So in other words, two soccer fields if you want, or one large open field space that would allow or accommodate an activity such as cricket. We do have that in there.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Rick. Probably second by Councilman Diamond. Any more discussion? Here now, we'll go down the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hear me?
Hi.
Yep. Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Harrisburg Elementary Baseball Complex Relamping.
All right. Thanks, Council. We're halfway there. So staying with the theme of athletics. So last fall, I was out with our sports and then walking around with some staff members had noticed that our lighting was not quite what I felt to be up to standard. And we took the liberty of having a light test performed by Musco. And as a result of that, our suspicions were correct in that we're quite a bit of lumens away from what is deemed as a safe playable field space at the four-field complex at Harrisburg or Harrisburg Elementary School. And we also had Stallings Park tested as well. Those lights are still in compliance. So tonight's request is to reward a contract to Musco to perform a relamping of the Harrisburg Elementary Four Field Complex Lights, which would include bulbs, ballast, and lights in an amount of twenty three thousand four hundred dollars. The good news is with this is that this has no impact to the general fund. This fund is coming from the Harris, or the, the, I'm sorry, blank in a minute, the I'm sorry, yes, Harrisburg Community and Youth Association Funds, which for those who don't know is funds that we receive from Land of Frost sponsorship annually. This arrangement was put together by formerly HYA many years ago and still remains with us today. Right now, we have an account balance of sixty two thousand dollars in the HCY account. So twenty three thousand four hundred would not be too much to pull from that account. The other detail is staff has applied for a grant from Cabarrus County, referred to as the Cabarrus County Matching Incentive Grant. If that is a reward, awarded to us, that would be fifty percent of the cost, reducing it to eleven thousand seven hundred. We won't know the grant announcement until later in June, early July, but we didn't want to delay in potentially missing the opportunity of having this safety issue reconciled before the fall ball season. So we're requesting to move forward with using solely HCY funds at this time. And if we were awarded the grant, we would replenish those funds with that grant. So the recommendation is to approve a contract with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of twenty three thousand four hundred dollars with the, with the attached related budget amendment to move forward with this project. And I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Daniel, Councilman Smith here. I know you mentioned the county grant that you guys applied for. Have you guys researched any Little League grants available? I know a lot of times they will assist in some of these lighting projects.
I have, Councilman Smith, a few times. There's, there's a few out there. There's the Little League Grants. There's a Major League Baseball Grant, which is a popular one. Oftentimes, the problems with those grants is they are really solely interested in lower income situations, nonprofit, you know, demographics that really doesn't quite fit the mold unfortunately that we find here in Harrisburg. So we often have a challenge with those types of grants. We're always keeping our eyes and ears peeled for any opportunities available. I have looked into those and am very familiar. For that particular one, we do not meet the criteria based on our, again, mainly it's centered around your demographics, but other opportunities such as this matching incentive and then other things. For instance, the part of grant we receive for the Harrisburg Park Project, we're always trying to gear for those and get any money as we can.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Daniel, are these HID fixtures?
I believe they're metal halide. Councilman Patrick, these are older lights.
Was, was, I don't know if this was included in the bid or not, but are there any visors or other items intended to reduce light pollution since we're retrofitting these?
There are light visors and they are going to replace the ones that are on the poles they're working on.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Rick.
Councilman Smith, second.
Second. Any more discussion? Here now, go down the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Moving to Harrisburg Park Professional Services Contract.
All right. Last but not least for me. So this is in relation to Harrisburg Park and the project we're currently working on and coming to a near end. So this has to do with the design side of the project and the design services and professional services that were tied to it. So as part of this project, obviously Benish Engineering was hired to perform construction documents and other related items to this bid. Their initial contract was a pretty lean at three hundred and forty four thousand five seventy five for these services. In addition to that, a few things, if one is to review this contract, were left to be determined or set with do not exceed amounts in efforts to keep a lean contract intentional. So as we moved through the project, one item in particular that come up that changed the design services was the addition of the YMCA facility coming onboard. There was a number of things that changed the footprint and also the master plan design that we had originally put together for Harrisburg Park. So as a relation to those, we had about seventy five hundred dollars plus minus in development design services as related to that. In addition to, as we moved in, if you recall, we had a grant for part of, that was for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as we received that money, we had the opportunity to change and or expand or elaborate on some of the amenities that we originally weren't prepared or had the funding to do so. However, as a result of doing some of those upgrades and utilizing that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that did result in some additional plans and as-bills and different types of site visits and also design-related items that added an additional fee to the project. So staff was waiting to a closer three-quarter mark of the project as a whole to introduce this design side of the amendment, simply because we didn't want to come in January and ask for seventy five hundred dollars for the YMCA and then come back and ask for five and then, and keep on nickeling and diamond. And we knew, we were negotiating these expenditures with Benish. They certainly could have been a lot more. However, they've been willing to kind of work with us through this project. In the end, the total of the seventy five hundred and twelve five is what we have for a total of twenty thousand to amend their contract in the design services aspect. The good news is this is not going to require any additional money to be put toward the project ordinance as a whole. We'll simply be moving money from the construction side of the project over to the design services part of the project. So with that, construction side of the project over to the design services part of the project. So with that, staff recommends approval of a contract amendment related to the project ordinance amendment as it is attached in the amount of $20,000 from construction side of the project to the design services project. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Rick.
Smith, second.
Proper second by Councilman Smith. Any more discussion? And here now, I'll go down the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Next item, recognition banners for local high school seniors.
Mayor and Council, this is really a discussion item. This was a fantastic idea that was introduced by council members wanting to have some sort of recognition for both high school seniors and college graduates that have been impacted by COVID-19. So staff has provided you with some detailed information on what those banners cost for us along Highway 49, and we look forward to your direction on how you wish for us to proceed, if in, if any, on whether or not those banners will be produced.
Open up for discussion.
I'm in favor of it. Haynes and I talked this week to put four on each of the three intersections, recognizing the 2000 or not, no, no year, recognizing the seniors from, I guess you could say Harrisburg, which would include Central embarrass Jim Robinson, Hickory Ridge.
It could actually include more than that because each of the schools are an academy. So, you know, it's like my neighbor, she goes to Northwest.
Right.
So, um, you know, any, any school on it is just however we want to set it up. You know what I mean, Haynes? Whatever you guys want to decide.
Haynes, Councilman Selberg, I would be in.
You're on mute, man.
I would think we, we need to keep them generic if we can use them year after year. Is that what staff sees fit?
Yeah, staffer would recommend just a generic, not have any particular year or any particular school identified on it. Something as simple as congratulation graduates, you know, with the capping down or cap, you know, kind of image displayed on it. That way, you're, you're capturing both high school graduates that are here at public schools, but those that also may be homeschooled or go to private schools as well as college graduates who live here in the community as well. So I think a very generic banner would be perfect for accomplishing and congratulating all graduates.
Thank you so much.
Let me follow me, Hayes. I'm in.
I thought I ordered that emotion. We got a motion on the floor by Councilman Ron and seconded by Councilman Russo. Any more discussion? Move down the list. Councilman Ron.
Hi.
Councilman John.
Hi.
Councilman Rodney.
Hi.
Councilman Ian.
Hi.
Councilman Rick.
Hi.
Councilman Troy.
Hi.
Councilwoman Diamond. Motion carries. Perfect.
Sorry, guys. Just on that note, we will bring back a budget amendment for you guys to consider at the June council meeting related to those costs, but we're going to focus on those large banners at the major intersections of our community and get those up as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Haynes. Appreciate it.
Hey, Haynes, while you're doing that, can you make sure you check into the site triangles on intersections? Probably run it by Rob. We don't want to create a safety issue.
These will be specifically those banners that we currently have in place at those four major intersections that say welcome, on the move, you know, whatever, and they have the colored banners that exist. So we'll take those existing banners down and we will replace those with these graduate banners for the months of May and June now and moving forward.
Oh, so those are on the banner arms for the light poles, not freestanding?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Unified Development Ordinance Steering Committee application.
Yeah, this is another item that was requested by council to have on the agenda. We just need direction from you guys. Just some background on this for the public that are listening in. The town is going through the process of updating its Unified Development Ordinance, and part of that process is to have public engagement. So we will have several public meetings that will encourage our community members to come out and participate in that. But throughout the length of the process, the multi-month process in developing that update, we would like to have a member of the public sit on our steering committee and assist us with walking through from the beginning to the end. And we are at that point now where our consultant that we've onboarded is prepared to begin that process of, of moving forward with this, this UDO update. So a council member has created an application for public to submit to the town for consideration and appointment onto that committee. So we just need direction from council on the application to use for that.
In, in looking at it, I appreciate what Councilman Patrick has put together. I question the participation within the academy, only because of our academy has not been in place for a very long period of time. Of the people that have participated within the academy, several of those people are not even residents of Harrisburg. So I don't want to preclude somebody that could be rather beneficial to the group just because they haven't participated in the academy.
I think that references the question about whether or not the applicant has participated in the Town Citizens Academy. So I think to that point, yeah, we've had three of those roughly averaging a dozen or so participates in those with some of those not being members of, of the, of the Harrisburg community. So is that correct, Troy?
Yes, that, that is correct. I would, I would ask that we stricken that from the application.
I would agree with Councilman Selberg that I'd believe that that's a question that is not applicable. I do feel like a question that is applicable is how long you've lived in Harrisburg. As Troy, Councilman Selberg, just indicated that by having that, the, the citizens question removed, he said there's been people that have been in Harrisburg for a long time, that that would eliminate them. Well, this also having the question of how long have you lived in Harrisburg doesn't seem to show any bias. We also have that on other planning board that we have, other planning boards like the planning zoning, the fire, and the parking wreck.
Everybody agree or disagree?
I, I would say go with consistency.
So we had a time in, in Harrisburg or how long you've been a resident to the question. And removing the connection on the Citizens Academy. Anything else?
May also ask, are we only, did we ever really decide if it's only going to be one resident out of all of Harrisburg on the, on the UDO?
I think that what we would do is take the guidance of the consultant on that as far as the number. I think Sushil's on here. If he, he may be able to speak directly to the number of public participants recommended by the consultant. But keep in mind, we're going to have lots of and want to encourage lots of public input on this. But the idea is to make sure that the committee doesn't get too large so that they can navigate through it more efficiently. But Sushil, I know you may want to comment on that.
Thank, thank you, Haynes. So, so the idea behind the steering committee is, is to have this vetting body that will look at consultant work along with staff before it comes to planning, town council, and also goes out to the public meeting. Typically, the makeup in terms of numbers is like 10 to 14 people, just to make sure that the, the meeting runs smoothly and we have enough input from everybody in the meeting. This is the first time honestly in my career that we've dealt with the typical resident representative, because a lot of times we would, we would have your planning board representation or parking wreck board, because those are residents, citizens of your community as well. I've never dealt with this situation and, and I asked our consultant, it's not typical, but some communities do it. So my recommendation based on my conversation would be just limit to one person.
Just curious, how many have financial interest? That would be on that committee? Meaning, any developers, any builders, any?
Not at this point. What we have decided to do is those financially interest, folks with financial interest, we will most likely do focus group meetings rather than having them in the steering committee. So this committee will be made of a representation from town council, from planning board, parking wreck, from the county, from the school board, maybe from a business alliance, the real estate building industry coalition representative. So we had those broad, broad professional that deal with UDO regulations on a day-to-day basis. We, we have worked within our timeline to capture those specific groups like architects, engineers, and, and most likely Speedway being a unique entity to seek their input through focus group meetings. So we'll be doing those separately.
So Sushil, this is Councilman Selberg. Ron, are you still speaking?
Yeah, I had one last question.
Yes, go ahead.
Have we ever considered a DRB, Design Review Board? I mean, I understand we have a planning and zoning, but, you know, our, our planning and zoning guys don't always look at, you know, the, you know, all, all the dynamics of the project. I just wonder if we have ever considered a DRB at all?
Well, that would be one of the things we could look at as part of the UDO update to create that extra body. But the planning board does look at, look at design to, to the extent they can. And that's why we were, last time when we were bringing new member on board, we wanted somebody with architectural background to give some of that feedback.
It's just, in, in most towns, I've seen the DRBs have a lot more teeth than per se your planning and zoning group, because they've got to get through there before they can even get to PNC.
Yeah, I mean, you could, but it's, it's just extra layer to go through. I mean, the staff is doing a lot of design reviews. And again, we, we have no ability to do design reviews for residential anyways, based on the state law. We have pretty strict commercial design guidelines in books, and the staff does review those. And so far, we, we have not run into any problems.
So Sushil, Councilman Selberg here. What you just described to me is exactly what we did with the HALA. And in, in what we did there, we had a liaison from council that reported back to
Council.
Council on what was heard. And in this particular case, if I'm correct, we have this set up more like a, a committee rather than what the HALA was set up like.
Well, the, the intent is the same. The intent is the same to be, to be a sounding body as, as the UDO is created in different modules that, so when consultant drafts something, the platform we're using is going to allow elected officials and anybody in the public with access to the website to review those modules online 24/7 and provide live comments. As staff reviews the first draft, and then we take it to the steering committee, steering committee reviews and provides feedback, and then it goes to, if there is a public meeting, goes to the public meeting, and then on to the planning board, and then on to the council. So that's the iterative cycle of review we're going to go through. And this, this body made up of different folks from different fields are going to bring their perspective. They're not going to be expert in everything, but this is, as we present things, we have different voice in that group to alert us on if we are on the right path and if we are aligning our recommendations in the UDO to, to the HALA that we recently adopted. So it's, it's more of a sounding board. You can call it advisory board. It, it does not have any decision-making power. Ultimately, council will review and approve it at the end of the day. But this is that one extra layer other than your general public meetings to provide feedback through the process.
I, I just worry we may have too many cooks in the kitchen.
So let, let's resolve the, the resident piece first, and then we'll move to that other piece, Troy. So the suggestion is that we stay at one resident because there's obviously lots of residents from these other boards that are going to be participating. Are we good with one resident on this board? On this committee or whatever we're calling this thing? This group of people?
Well, I might, I might be good with just one person if we get away from the anonymity and then we know that, know who the person is. Because the other, Ron spoke of consistency for the other three boards, the planning boards, we know who the people are. Why should we not know who this person is when we're voting on them?
You will get the, you, let's make sure that's clear. You guys will get to appoint the committee member.
Better go to us for a formal approval.
But Ian, is that the way you've always wanted an enemy?
No, I think Haynes, what he's talking about is anonymity, anonymity, which is that the way it was set up was that we wouldn't know their name or address or anything. We'd just get pertinent. So in other words, no pedigree information, just.
Oh, I apologize. I misunderstood. Thank you for that clarification.
Just their qualifications. In, in other words, how we do kind of professional services stuff. So, so that way that, you know, nobody could stack the deck, so to speak. So we didn't know who we were picking. We were just picking them based on qualifications. And as this will be likely highly technical information, we want people that can absorb and process the information because they may have a background in, in working on these kinds of items.
And we'll know that by, by the information they put on it, regardless of if they give us their name or they don't give us their name, we will know based on how they fill out the application, their qualifications of, are they this or are they that?
I'm assuming somebody's going to have to know their name just to know that they don't live in Charlotte or live in Wilmington. I mean, we're going to have to know that they live in Harrisburg or in the area, right?
Well, the way that we set it up was that it would be sent to Janet and
She would filter it out. Okay.
She would filter it out for council.
Yep. Got it. Are we good with that? So we're good with the anonymity piece?
Yeah, let me say one thing. Just because, just because they have good qualifications don't mean they're going to be the right person. So think about that.
Yeah, I think some of the challenges and concerns that you guys are raising are probably a lot of the reasons why the consultant does, sees very few communities select a citizen participant on the steering committee, because you run into these sorts of concerns and challenges that you guys are all raising.
Somebody could be very highly qualified but not be the right person to do the job that we all want. I'm just, I'm just letting you guys know.
But I'm not, I'm not in support of this now. After these conversations, this is, this is craziness.
Well, it would be craziness, Troy.
Because we don't know who the person's going to be. It's never been done before. We're, we're going down a rabbit hole here, and I'm not for going down rabbit holes. I'd love to have a, a resident on there, but why are we hiding the resident? We don't hide them when we put them on planning and zoning. We don't hide them when we put them on parking racks. We're, I, I'm not, we're not going to pull a rabbit out of a hat and hope it's the right rabbit, not a termite.
Well, you're saying you're, you'd like to prejudge the person you're putting on the board. I think what I'm saying is we want representation, good or bad.
And, and I'll support a resident on the board. That's not what I'm saying. I just, I think we need to know who we're, you know, appoint to it.
Well, the good news is there's seven of you to get a vote on any one person. So if, if somebody's trying to stack it, it's got to work for at least four people.
Yeah. So I would say if, if everybody's okay, we'd remove the Citizens Academy. We would add the question on length of time that they lived here. And personally, I think it ought to be two residents, but I'm, I'm open to the board's position on that.
Hey, I'm good with two residents. You got no argument here with that. I appreciate. Well.
I mean, this is a steering committee after all. This is not a, a deciding body.
Well, I think the, the point with the residents, at least have a primary and an alternate. And I think we should probably talk about council having that same opportunity of primary and an alternate, just to make sure that we're covered from that perspective. But I think too, I think I heard from the consultants, and I think that the Cabarrus County planning folks are all suggesting even council. But I think too, I think I heard from the consultant, I think that the Cabarrus County planning folks are all suggesting even council just be one primary, one alternate. And I think Sushil's already mentioned that that's his recommendation. So we're going to be part of this every step of the way. We're going to have an opportunity to hear things as it's coming along and stopping or throwing the brakes on stuff before it actually gets to us to vote. So just be aware of that. So if we do have just one council, one alternate or one resident, one alternate, there's more information that's going to get out there along the way that everybody can react to.
So in essence, Mayor, you would say they're, they're actually going to end up picking two, the primary and the alternate. Is that correct?
That's how, that's what I, and I mean, that's just me suggesting, just based on what I heard from the consulting firm information as well as the county. So we know some people are not going to make everyone. I mean, it's just, especially if it's a, a quickly reoccurring meeting, we're going to have people missing.
So we need to be sure the application states that an alternate will be selected and they will be asked to fill in when the regular cannot make a meeting.
What are your thoughts on that?
That's still standard practice or should be. So where are we at now?
Alright, let's go back to the resident piece. Are we good with a primary and alternate resident? We, are we keeping anonymity or not?
And we need to know who this person is. The people.
Lloyd, Councilman Selberg, I agree.
Alright, so we're going to go with two people, primary and alternate. We're going to eliminate, we're going to change the questions as Ian stated previously, no civic, uh, community member, academy member, as well as length of time in Harrisburg will be added to the questions. Are we good there?
Smith, motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor, properly seconded by Rodney. Any more discussion on that? Want to go down the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney. Councilman Ian. Councilman Rick. Councilman Troy. Councilwoman Diamond. And before we conclude this, this discussion, let's go to the council members. I'm not even sure who was, we're going to do probably, we should do the same, a primary to back up for this position, keeping in mind the rest of us are all going to hear everything along the way. I can't remember who. I know there was at least two or three people. We probably should get back down to a primary and alternate if somebody can remember or tell me. I think Ian, you were initially the primary, if I'm not mistaken, or you were on it for sure. And then who is this, who are the other two?
Me and Rodney.
Alright, so if we can get Ian as the primary and which one of you, Troy or Rodney, as the alternate, and then we'll, we'll include this portion of the program.
I, I'll be fine with the alternate if Ian will take the lead.
Rodney, are you okay with that? I know you stepped up as well.
Well, I did, you know, originally because this is very important to me and that I, I just wanted to be on it also. This goes all the way back to February.
Well, just keep in mind, you're going to have an opportunity to, to, to make noise on the site where the information's going to be loaded. They're going to be in front of council. They're going to do work sessions with council. So it's not an exclusion just because you're not on that committee. You're just not having to go to many meetings, but you're going to hear the same amount of data. You should not miss anything that they're getting. It should absolutely go to council.
Well, I guess I have no choice, do I?
Just try to make it easier on the consultants and the county and all the folks that are going to be involved to try to keep it manageable for them as well. So they were doing the most effective job for us. Alright, so we got Ian and Troy and if Troy gets hit by a bus, Rodney will put you in. Anything else to discuss on that? Here now, we'll move to the last section, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion on the floor. Mr. Smith properly seconded. All in favor, say hi. To carries, thank you.